We're live. Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to a virtual meeting of the City of Dublin Planning and Zoning Commission. The Ohio Legislature passed several emergency laws to address the pandemic, including the ability for public entities to conduct virtual meetings. We are currently holding all of our meetings online and live streaming to YouTube until further notice. You can access the live stream on the city's website. We certainly welcome your comments on cases. In order to submit any questions or comments during the meeting, please use the form under the streaming video on the city's website. Your questions and comments will be relayed to the meeting moderator and to the commission by the meeting moderator. Please provide a valid name and address when submitting your comments and refrain from making any inappropriate comments. We want to accommodate public participation to the greatest extent possible. At this time, I invite all of you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Commission members and Vice Mayor DeRosa, if I could have you turn your video off and your audio on to join us in the pledge. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, we are looking to Vice Mayor DeRosa. Welcome, welcome. For the oath of office for a reappointed member, Mark Supalak. And Mark, we're certainly appreciative of your willingness to continue on on the PCC.
Thank you, Mountain Chair. It's a it's a pleasure to be here again tonight. On behalf of City Council, I just want to again take the opportunity to thank you so much for your service. I know it's a lot of a lot of work, but it's very, very important work and we we thank you very much. And we thank you, Mark, for your willingness to serve again, so we appreciate that. So if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me, we'll make this official. I state your full name.
I, Mark Supalak.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
The duties as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Of the City of Dublin.
Of the City of Dublin.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the State of Ohio.
And the State of Ohio.
And the ordinances and charter of the City of Dublin.
And the ordinances and charter of the City of Dublin.
Ohio.
Ohio.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations and thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
And thank you again, Vice Mayor Kathy DeRosa. It's always a pleasure to see you.
Thank you. You guys have a great meeting tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Beal, if I could turn the time over to you for roll call.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Supalak?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Schneer?
Yes.
And Mr. Way?
President.
Thank you very much, Ms. Beal. We have on our agenda tonight election of Chair and Vice Chair to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I would like to make a motion to appoint Mark Supalak as Vice Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes.
Mr. Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Way?
Yes.
Mr. Schneer?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Supalak?
Yes.
Thank you. I am looking for a motion to appoint a Chair for the coming year 2021 to 2022.
I'll make a motion to for Rebecca Call.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Beal?
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Supalak?
Yes.
Mr. Way?
Yes.
Mr. Schneer?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Beal, and thank you, ladies and gentlemen, especially for the the trust that you put in both Mark and myself for helping us in 2021 to 2022. At this time, we are looking at this evening's documents. Has everyone had a chance to review the documents on the agenda for today?
Yes.
Seeing as I will entertain a motion to accept the documents into the record.
I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Supalak. Ms. Beal?
Mr. Schneer?
Yes.
Mr. Way?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Supalak?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. And for the record, there are no meeting minutes for the commission for approval this evening, so. Moving on to case procedures. The Planning and Zoning Commission is an advisory board to City Council when rezoning and plating of property are under consideration. In such cases, City Council will receive recommendations from this commission. In other cases, the commission has the final decision-making responsibility. Anyone who intends to address the commission on any of these administrative cases must be sworn in. The agenda order is typically determined at the beginning of the meeting by the Chair. The rules and regulations of the Planning and Zoning Commission state that no new agenda items are to be intrused after 10:30 PM. There are no eligible cases for the consent agenda this evening. All right, there is a request to amend the order of the public agenda to hear cases four and five Kitchen Social prior to cases one, two, and three Bridge Park Block G. Do any commission members not wish to amend the agenda order? Seeing no objection, we will hear cases four and five first. That being said, anyone intending to address the commission on any cases this evening, could you please turn your video on and raise your right hand and answer in the affirmative? So I'll pause, make sure everyone has their video on staff looking to you to ensure that everyone who needs to have video on has video on. Yes. Thank you. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony to this commission?
Yes.
I do, yes.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our first case. This is case seven Kits and Social at 6767 Longshore Street. This evening, cases four and five will be heard together. I will read both cases into the record. And the first application 21-037WR is a request for deviations to transparency and entrance zoning code requirements associated with tenant modifications. The second application 21-021MPR is a request for exterior modifications to the tenant space located within Bridge Park Block D, Building D2, Zone Bridge Street District, Scioto River Neighborhood. The site is southwest of the intersection of Riverside Drive with John Shields Parkway. And Nikki, it looks like you have our case presentation this evening.
Yes, good evening. Okay. Good evening. As mentioned, this is a request for review and approval for Kitchen Social. This is both a minor project review as well as a waiver review, presenting this application on behalf of Zach Hounshell. So the site is located within Bridge Park Block D. Block D is the northernmost block of development within the Bridge Park Development. This is Building D2, which is the northwest building. And within Building D2, this is the northernmost ground story tenant. So these are some existing conditions photos. On the left-hand side of your screen, you'll see the east elevation of this tenant space along Longshore Street. And on the right-hand side of your screen, you'll see the north elevation of the tenant space, which is the primary consideration this evening. This north elevation is along John Shields Parkway Greenway. So you'll see that green open space there with the bike path in the foreground and John Shields Parkway. Here are some additional images. You can see the John Shields Parkway streetscape as well as a significant underground pedestrian walkway, which provides access to the future Riverside Crossing Park on the west side of Riverside Drive. So with that, here is a floor plan and site plan for Kitchen Social. To the left-hand side of your screen is north with John Shields Parkway and Riverside Drive on the bottom of your screen to the west. So highlighted in red here is the previously approved terrace area, which was part of the base building approval. The these are the primary modifications under consideration, although there are minor tenant modifications to the primary entrance along Longshore Street as well as minor modifications to the west elevation. So with the north elevation, the applicant is proposing to permanently enclose a terrace, which was originally designated for outdoor dining, however, was not enclosed as part of the building. So three 10-foot-tall garage doors are proposed. These are intended to provide maximum transparency between the indoors and outdoors in order to accommodate the garage door manufacturer size. The applicant is proposing to infill the colonnade with a nichihua fiber cement panel in a gray color. Staff is conditioning a thin brick in a dark gray to match the upper stories of the building is used in lieu of the fiber cement. The intent there is really to reinforce the permanence of this building addition and ensure the quality and character meets the requirements of the Bridge Street District. So when these garage doors are open, there will be a patio there, a 36-inch wire railing, which is also proposed to really be imperceptible, is intended to enclose that area. So along the east elevation, which is Longshore Street and the primary entrance to the tenant space, you'll see here on either side of the entrance, a nano wall system is proposed. Below that window system, a new porcelain tile is proposed in a blue-gray color, which matches the aesthetics of the brand. Here are some conceptual proposed character images. Here you can see both the storefront as well as the patio enclosure and just some additional views. In the lower right-hand corner of your screen, you can see the minor modifications to the west elevation of this tenant space. An existing stair in that location is proposed to be enclosed to provide that occupiable space. So with that, the applicant has provided a number of materials. The intent is that this seamlessly integrate with the base building. Staff is recommending approval of two waivers. These waivers are required due to the enclosure of this tenant space. One is to eliminate entrances that were previously on the north facade and the other is to modify the percent of primary building materials and transparencies. Staff is also recommending approval of a minor project review with three conditions. The brick, as previously mentioned, and then two final details, one that will be addressed at building permitting in regards to fire and fire suppression, and the last being that all patio furniture detail selections be reviewed by the administrative review team. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, the applicant team is here as well and prepared to make a statement.
Thank you, Nikki. Let's switch things up a little bit. Commission, do you have any questions for Nikki at this time? Nikki, I just have one. With Council's challenge to Planning and Zoning Commission on quality of materials, one of the things that's been a sensitivity is the word thin. So I know that that staff is recommending thin brick in lieu of the nichihua product. And you may mention to match the rest of the building. Is the rest of the building already done in a thin brick?
Well, I do not have the answer to that this evening. I can speak from experience that on the upper stories of many of these buildings, they are clad in thin brick just due to the weight of a full-depth brick product. Really, the intent behind being supportive of thin brick in this application is that, one, it's limited, and two, the the depth of the of the thin brick is more close to the cementitious siding so that the entire storefront system would not need to be redesigned as a result of this condition.
Thank you, Nikki. Any other questions from the commission for Nikki at this time? Ms. Fox?
Nikki, was there any other consideration other than a garage door for the a glass garage door for the was it discussed with planning to use any other system besides the garage doors?
So the applicant did have an initial proposal, which was, you know, pretty substantially changed prior to this garage door proposal coming forward. You know, I can let the applicant speak to that design, but it included a a low wall much more similar to the main facade of the building, so it was actually enclosed and then windows above. So the garage door element was actually at the suggestion of staff to increase the transparency and to retain as much of the colonnade element as possible.
And the and the win, okay, I will ask the staff. And then, do you? Okay, that's probably good enough for now. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff at this time? All right, looking to the applicant.
Hold on, Nikki, just to be just to be clear, and maybe I just I'm just getting hung up in your in the staff report, the recommendations for disapproval versus recommendations for approval on on the various parts. The disapproval of the administrative departure, the recommended disapproval, stems from missing the 80% materials, primary materials, correct? And then and then the recommendation to move to brick, albeit a thin brick, gets us to the 80%?
Correct. So basically, with the elimination of with the elimination of the fiber cement board, which is a secondary material, then they retain compliance with the primary permitted materials. Which is why we're recommending disapproval of the administrative departure and then making a condition in regards to that fiber cement board.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions for staff? All right, looking to the applicant. Do you have a presentation for us this evening, or would you like to speak to the application?
I think we would. Well, first of all, thank you so much for the time. We appreciate you fitting us into the schedule and staff has been outstanding working with us through the process. Nikki and her and the whole team have been great. We appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. With that said, I think we were here really more to answer questions and kind of talk a little bit about what the vision was. I don't know if anybody has been to Kitchen Social over at, we have one at Polaris. And with the open air, what we were trying to accomplish. A couple of points on some of the comments back from from staff. We had initially looked at the at the boards because we felt like that would allow us to have a little bit of our own feel, a little bit of Kitchen Social, while it won't necessarily be exactly the same as you go up and down the whole building. It also, though, would lend itself to allow us to stand out a little bit as as a restaurant on the side, very similar to a lot of the other tenants that are in the in the development, how they have a little bit of their own nature, their own curb appeal, their own storefront. We were looking to do that. That was the reason why we had chosen the secondary materials from from the list of options there.
Thank you.
Yes, and and with regard to the garage door, I think our initial proposal, as Nikki had stated, was to do a half-wall and then have a garage door come down because we want we wanted the open air. One of the parts of the concept is the indoor-outdoor. We really want to bring the outdoor in and the indoor out, hence for the patio. And I think even more today relevant than even where we designed our first restaurant two and a half years ago was the fact that the indoor-outdoor is really, really needed and necessary in today's environment for the guests to feel comfortable dining out. So that's why we went with the garage door, something that could easily go up and down and allow that allow people to feel comfortable sitting outside.
Thank you for that. All right, Commission, looking to you for questions for the applicant at this time. Yes, Kim?
Good evening. I was wondering if the applicant could speak to the durability of the porcelain tile that's being proposed on the exterior by the entrance?
It's an indoor-outdoor tile. We currently have it on the facade of the outside exterior bar at our Polaris location, which has been out there for, well, we opened in November of 19. So but but it is an indoor-outdoor porcelain tile.
Thank you. I have a follow-up too, if I could.
Yes, sir.
I noticed in the elevations for the rest of the building that they have lights on all of kind of the columns as you go around the building. And I noticed that you chose not to incorporate those lights. I'd just like to hear your your point of view on that. And I would suggest that some lighting, some meeting lighting related to your your establishment and something on those columns, I think, would be a positive addition.
Well, I absolutely would agree with that. I believe, my understanding was that the lights on the columns and the rest of the building were existing when those tenants went in. Nikki, you might be able to speak a little bit more to that than I can, but that was my initial understanding. And so rather than try to change it a little bit more on that exterior, we chose not to, but that would absolutely be something if staff and the committee were willing to look at that. We would, I'd love to have some some lights on the exterior post there on that patio. Yes, sir.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Way. Mr. Schneer?
Two questions, two minor questions, please. First, with respect to the garage doors, that was a combination of your suggestion and input from staff. Is that correct? I mean, you both agreed with that?
Yes, you know, again, I think initially I designed a half-wall, which would have been more of a permanent wall versus the railings. I need either A, railings, or B, a wall to, because of liquor codes, I need to be able to stop people from coming in or going out per code. So we had initially designed a half-wall, and I think staff had come up with a nice compliment to say, why don't we introduce something that would allow a little more more light in, which was the railings, the wire railings, which actually we would be using and utilizing the existing railings that are already on the current building and just bringing those down. And the garage doors really, for me, is important because, one, the ability to go up three quarters of the year, and then, two, to allow that natural light, even in the winter months, you're still allowing that natural light inside the building.
I'll take modest issue with your ambition of three quarters of a year for open garage doors in this climate, but I'm I'm for it. And are you are you okay with the staff's recommendation of the brick instead of the secondary material?
My initial feeling is I would prefer the secondary material because I think it allows us to have a little bit more of our own current storefront. So it does. I really kind of want, obviously, the restaurant to stand out. I think the patio will with the garage door with the open air like that. That's really going to give us a nice view, really, the front door to Bridge Park as you're driving south on Riverside Drive. So we prefer the secondary material. But if it comes down to approval and the secondary material is not something that we think is going to get through, then I absolutely support the the thin brick.
And I and I may have misunderstood, but is is I wasn't aware, is the railing? I thought, is the railing a continuation? Is it the same type of railing that already exists? And if it isn't, it is. Okay, that's all.
It's the railing that exists. Nikki, I think third floor on that building, second and third floor, it's the same, the the exact same as what we would be using. Okay, thank you.
What's that, all the balconies?
Yes.
Mr. Supalak?
Nikki, maybe this is this is a question. So I guess I'm I'm going to, I'm stepping back, right? Are we evaluating the 80%? Are we evaluating this on Kitchen Social's tenant space? Are we evaluating it on the building?
So there are, right, obviously, the Form-based code is super complex, and I think we can obviously, we can get caught up really easily in some of these details. And so there are two different ways that the code addresses this. One calculation method is for materials and a different calculation method is for transparency. So for materials, you take the entire north elevation, so all six stories of the building, and that is how that is calculated. So really, any modifications for this particular tenant are nominal. And then for transparency, transparency requirements are only for the ground story. And then there's a different requirement for upper stories. So for the ground story of this building, the transparency requirements were incorrectly calculated when the base building was approved. So we are requesting a waiver to address that error and then to incorporate, really, again, nominal changes based on these tenant modifications.
All right, so I'm getting, I'll be honest, I'm getting lost in in a little bit of that. I guess I'm going to maybe maybe I'm not picking up on it. I I'm not necessarily picking up on transparency issues, shortages. And if I'm looking at the entirety of the building sans sans the transparency, I mean, it's it's all brick. Maybe I'm maybe I'm having a hard time reconciling how the the small shift from the small shift on, I mean, whether it's nichihua, whether it's whether it's thin brick or whether it's tile, there's really not that much of it as far as square footage goes. I have, I'm having a hard time thinking that that triggers a 7% change on the entirety of the north facade. Am I wrong?
Well, yeah, so the nuance is that windows, if they are in the upper stories, they count as glass and they are a primary building material in that case. On the ground story, they count as storefront and not as a primary building material. So when you modify this north elevation to add the storefront, I think that is where where that deviation is.
So so now we're not getting credit for the glass.
Correct.
Which which we otherwise consider a primary material.
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right.
There's not a lot of there's not a lot of logic, but there is a lot of math.
No, I I I get that. And maybe that's where in our, now you're starting to touch on. I I'm not, I'm not fully grasping all this and or there's triggers in here that that don't intuitively. I, I'm not, I'm not fully grasping all this and/or there's triggers in here that, that don't intuitively make sense. And we might've just unearthed one of them. So it's, the seven percent swing actually comes from the combination of the, I mean, the infill of the entire panel because we're not using, by, by the definition, good, bad, or indifferent. We're not using any primary materials anymore, but I, I still would, I still would worry that that is written in error because we would not, we would prefer glass to brick in these infills at this level.
Absolutely.
Correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And to be, I mean, to be quite honest with you, I question whether or not the administrative departure should be approved just to make sure we're all super safe this evening and don't have to be back before you. I mean, the intent was really from a planning perspective to hold the line, to make sure we are requiring the utmost character and quality that we can, particularly at this ground floor where there are pedestrians interacting with one another. But as mentioned, there are, there are more factors at play than just this tenant. It's a variety of base building calculations and tenant calculations. I don't know if that answers your question.
So just a follow-up question. We're not debating between glass and thin brick. We're debating between thin brick and nichihara. Is, is that a correct statement? Because the application originally came with nichihara, not thin brick. The recommendation is for thin brick. And that's why nichihara is not a permitted, permitted primary material. Is that correct?
But we're having that debate because we're short on primary material as the calculation sees fit. Because our glass, which is a primary material and all other circumstances is not, does not qualify here for some reason.
Agreed, but I would make the argument that glass in a garage door is not equivalent to stationary static glass that is mounted in, in a building. So I just want to make sure that we're looking at, the, the spirit of the law is quality. And so what is higher quality material, the combination of thin brick plus a garage door that is primarily glass? Or nichihara plus a garage door that is primary, primarily glass? And I would argue the thin brick combination is higher quality than the nichihara material. All right, other questions?
If, if I can, I think that, I think as you go throughout the, the development, you'll see that one, I think that the nichihara is utilized even across the street. It's utilized over Yoga Six Studio and the apartments. Something very similar to that. And I think that there's some different secondary and or primary surfaces that are used throughout the development that would allow people to use, utilize their storefront to differentiate. And I, and I think that that's really, the nichihara is, is a quality material. It's a, it's an outdoor material. It's, it's a weatherproof material. And I think that with the glass, and while it might've been a little bit overstating the seventy-five percent, maybe sixty-five percent or sixty percent of the year, we would estimate that there'd be no glass at all because it will all be up.
Understood. All right, Commission, again, questions? Do we have questions for staff or for the applicant at this time? Ms. Fox?
Yes, I, I have a question because I, I'm struggling here with the recommendation to go to just the clear transparency of the glass instead of a, a knee wall. I'm kind of curious, Nikki, if that was just to satisfy transparency? Or what was the reason to take away something distinctive like the, like a mosaic knee wall or a tiled knee wall?
Mm-hmm. So I'll pull up the drawings of the previous iteration for you guys. So we can just make sure we're all conceptualizing it. But the intent behind staff's recommendation, and we felt quite strongly about this, was we wanted to retain the appearance of the colonnade to the greatest extent possible. Because the colonnade actually serves an architectural purpose that is to transition between the public and the private realm. And so the greater the level of transparency and the, the more that that element can be retained, the more you can still allow for that transition while accommodating the desires of this tenant. Which is why staff was not supportive of implementing the knee wall solution. Because it really did then, there was a hard line at the John Shields Greenway or a division between the public and private realm. Whereas this solution, hopefully with the visual permeability, allows us to retain some of that transition.
And if I can, I, I think Nikki was right. We, we were comfortable with that change as well.
So Jane, this is the previous proposal. And this knee wall is, it's not a mosaic tile, but it is to match the existing building foundation. So it's like a, a manufactured stone.
It wouldn't have been the tile. It would have been a, a manufactured stone.
Yeah, like a masonry unit.
Oh, okay. Yeah, because the Polaris one has a, if I'm correct, has a tile knee wall bar-like.
The, the tile is around the corner.
Right, it is around the corner, around the entrance. Just around the entrance though, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Any other questions from the Commission at this time? All right. Looking to planning staff, any other items that need to be covered prior to discussion on this item?
Not at this time.
And any public comment received?
We do not have any public comment on this application.
All right, thank you. Commission members, now looking to you for deliberation and discussion on this item. We have a couple of talking points. The, the first one that I want to tackle is the administrative, sorry, looking for my notes. The administrative consideration for this evening that is recommended disapproval by staff. So Mr. Super, I think that you started in discussion earlier in your comments. Do you want to start off?
Yeah, about this, I, I generally agree with omitting the knee wall in the, in the garage, in the garage bays. I don't have a problem with the, the garage door coming down. It looks by all appearances that the Polaris, Polaris store has a good quality. And I imagine this will be a good, even better quality door. So that's, that I think is the right adjustment to, to everything staff and Nikki articulated about it. Preserve the integrity of the, the colonnade there. I actually don't take issue with, I'd be willing to grant that the door is glass, is primary material. And therein, I, I don't know that it trips me up on trying to solve for primary material wrapping around that, that glass. I, I don't. Nichihara is often, very often a, a good product. I don't take issue with it. Thin brick can, can also just as easily prove problematic. So this is, I guess this is me generally saying I could go in favor of approval of the administrative departure. No. May, maybe that, maybe what I'm articulating is a, a different interpretation than staff has, which might mean we override the, the recommended disapproval there.
Thank you, Mr. Super. Ms. Fox, would you like to go next?
Okay, you know, I, I tend to agree on the, on the glass being, it was, we need more glass. I have to agree with the architect here in that I believe when I first saw this, my impression was, well, it's great that we're going to have outdoor dining, but there's nothing that makes me want to. There's nothing architecturally or color contrast if we put thin brick on to match the above and the columns, that it's going to make me stop and see this as a very distinctive facade. So I would even like to see more detail around the windows. I would like to see lights on the column. I would like to see this stand out more. It doesn't stand out enough to me. I think it needs more architectural detail and, and the color contrast of using, I think it's a dark, I'm not, what color is that fiber cement board? It's a, a dark, let's see.
A dark.
A powder, dark gray, isn't it? So it would be, it would make a nice contrast rather than just matching up the red brick, I think. The porcelain tile has a nice touch. I would like to see some, some extra detail over the entrance way. I think part of what we see a lot in Bridge Park, and I know it's really difficult because you're trying to do these spaces. And it, it's expensive to do the interior. So, you know, to do the exterior is just an extra, a bit of money. But, but I feel like you are sitting on a very prime corner here as you come across from the tunnel and along John Shields Parkway. And with the nice curve and all, I think it deserves the extra impact that additional design elements would give you, whether that's a canopy over the entrance way. I can't design it for you, but I, I would, I would prefer the contrasting color against the columns, lighting on the columns, canopies and extra lighting wherever you can find it. I think this needs to pop a lot more for you to really get a great effect coming around that corner. And I'd like to hear what others say and continue this conversation.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Mr. Wayne, would you like to go next?
Well, I guess from my perspective, in an ideal world, what some people would like to see is just the garage door filling up that space. So if you could, if you could build, custom-built garage doors that fit each one of those openings, then you'd have a complete glass kind of experience. But that's probably not likely. So then the question is, how do you create the, the gap or the infill so that it looks like it fits into the building? And I, I think staff is thinking that if you continue the brick, it's going to look more contiguous with the rest of the facade. I'm, I'm kind of torn between the two. I, I understand staff's perspective, but I also actually don't mind the contrast. I think if it's done right, it won't look like it's just a, an infill. I, I like the whole, the whole plan. I like the simpleness of it. I like the openness of it when the garage doors are open. And, and that was the intent of the original space to be kind of like a terrace. So, and other than the lighting, which I've already talked about, I think I'm, I'm pretty much supportive of what we're seeing.
Thanks.
Let me chime in on one thing on, we, we are using a custom width garage door. And the jams are as small as they possibly can be to make the garage door actually work. The way those things work is they close onto the face of something. And we can't put them at the back of the existing column to fill that whole opening or we would lose two and a half feet of space.
That's why I was saying in an ideal world.
Right, right. But, but I did want to, I did want to point out, we are, you know, we're going with like an eighteen-foot or garage door when eighteen foot is standard. So.
Thanks.
Yep.
Mr. Schnur, would you like to go next?
I'm generally, I, I am in favor of the design as submitted. The railing's fine because it's, it's a continuation. I actually, I, I think the garage doors are a great touch, even in this climate because for all the obvious reasons of allowing the public, more of a public-private transition and just for the dining experience. I can go back and forth on what's above those. I, I understand the staff's position with respect to, to the thin brick. And we, we all know how much, we've talked about sort of the fiber board solutions and fiber cement and, and the concerns we had, but I'm okay. I'm a little, may misunderstood again that I thought the applicant was saying part of the reason for that was to provide some distinction. However, the colors they've chosen for that element are, you know, tend to, tend to blend in. And, and to Jane's point, if they're going to go that route, maybe, you know, maybe they should pop a, a little more than match the rest of the exterior.
Thank you, Mr. Schnur. Mr. Fishman? Warren, you're muted.
There we go. I, I'm on the fence too. I, I'm always interested in durability as well as appearance. I, I, I'm hoping that the thin brick doesn't fall off eventually from wear and tear from people banging against it and so on. So because essentially you're gluing the brick onto this, onto a stucco base or whatever. I, I would, that reason, I would probably prefer regular brick, but I, I don't think that's an option at this point. And so I, I would go either way, whatever the, the majority says. I think that it'll look good either way. I, I, I think it has to be done right so it doesn't look like we filled in a space that was too big. So. I'm neutral.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Mr. Grimes?
Thank you. I'd like to probably add and extend to some of the comments that Jane made about lighting and, and color and pop. And I think that's a really important point in, in the whole development. Being north-facing, you want to get as much natural light as possible. With a wire fencing, I think that helps the view of a lot of people that'll be driving in and out of the area and walking in and out of the area. So as much as you can add, because you've already got the entrance to the, to the underground there with, which has plenty of stone and other things that are kind of a, I don't, I wouldn't say blocking the, the view of this establishment. But you want to get as much as you can to bring in all those lights and colors and, and accentuate that and differentiate that and be a, a welcoming, very much a welcoming gateway point. So I like the doors. I like the light. I think there's so many things about this that are better than what was originally proposed. So I, I like what I see, but certainly more can be done. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. And I'm, I'm just going to elaborate a little bit more on those comments. I know that as we look at these colonnades and I understand staff's perspective in keeping the, the, the vision of the building and the architectural elements flowing. But, but they do look somewhat like blank canvas. And so when, when we're talking about lighting, you know, that is one element that we are looking for just for more. You know, if there were topiaries that were at the base of those colonnades that, that kept that vertical view, if there was something else that is more interesting, you look at your entrance and, you know, Mr. Way touched on simplicity and we do like simplistic. The, the lower tile is a beautiful tile with the variation in color. The sign is very simple in its, in its design. I do agree with Ms. Fox that the, the entrance could be, to, to use Mr. Super's term, loved on a little bit more. Something that is a little bit more inviting in that entrance area. But then as you turn the corner, the garage doors are nice and they do allow the, the interior of the building to benefit from those, those, the natural light and the views. But it does not very much for the exterior. And so something that is, again, we've touched on light, we've touched on, you know, landscaping there on, on the side of the building, but just something a little more. And so as we're looking at, we're looking at the, the durability, we're looking at the quality. And we're looking at the, the inviting nature of the building. And I, I think we're debating right now quality. We're agreeing that it does meet simplicity and it does have, the elements that are there are of high enough quality. I will always argue for full-depth brick and higher quality materials over low-quality and lower-budget materials, even though they are, they are acceptable secondary materials. We want our primary material. They are, um, acceptable secondary materials. We want our primary materials to be high quality. It's what makes Dublin Dublin. And so with, with those words, I, I suppose I will leave it there. Applicant, first of all, um, thank you. You know, you made a comment early on about, uh, that, that the, the Nietzsche Haw was your preferred, but. You would be willing to accept the thin brick. So we certainly appreciate willingness to make sure that the, that the application is one that is. Acceptable to you and works for the city as well. So it's always nice to be in a partnership type relationship where we are working. To make this corner something that we can all be proud of. So thank you very much. Ms. Fox, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just want, I want to verify something because I think it was, um, maybe, maybe not quite understood. Um, the color of the Nietzsche Ha is a dark gray. So there is a different, there is a contrast between that and the red brick. And I want to be sure that that's correct. Right?
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Right. So that, that was one of the things. And then the second thing is, and I, I just want to bring this forward because. In code, entrance design of doorways is spelled out that principal entrances of all building types. Shall effectively address the street and be given prominence on the building facade. So. I would like to recommend, or I'd like to suggest, and hear what. The rest of the commission says before we get on with this about the entrance way, because I think. We're all kind of saying the same thing. And I think we all want for Kitchen Social to have the distinction. That, um, that, you know, the architect and, and, um, the owner wants. So. I would at least like to have a little bit more time discussing the possibilities there and what those distinctive features. May be available, you know, um, to be done.
Mr. O'Malley, did you have a comment?
Uh, two things. One, when we were talking about the, uh, the landscaping, uh, on the outside of the patio there. Now, my understanding is that that's a Dublin protected green space. Um, we had initially drawn up in our own, we never presented it to Nikki and staff. Um, landscaping there because we found out through Crawford Hoang that that was a green space. Um, if it's, if it's feasible, we would come out two, three feet with landscaping to soften and warm up. That side in addition to what we're doing. If that's something that, that the committee be, would be willing to do, we would be willing to undertake that process. Because I do believe that that side needs a little something, but we were told that, that, that green space is the green space and we were not to encroach on that. So I would love to be able to do some things, um, to soften up that side and bring a little more warmth to, uh, the north side of the patio.
So Nikki, just clarification there. I, I believe there's a difference between improving, uh, dedicated space that is city owned and. Um, incorporating that into a, a, a building or whatnot. So can you speak to the green space?
Yeah. So first thing is that the John Shields Parkway Greenway is different than all of the other green spaces in Bridge Park. So all of the green spaces and plazas in Bridge Park are owned by Bridge Park and accessible to the public. The Greenway is actually owned by the City of Dublin, um, and is a linear park that connects from Riverside, uh, Crossing Park all the way to. Um, Village Parkway. And so there is a future Parks master planning effort that will take place for that Greenway. Um, so it's, it's unoccupied now, but it's, it's planned to be, um, master planned, which is, um. You know, really the root cause of our reservation of having a private tenant make improvements to city parkland. Um, certainly appreciate that the interim condition is not ideal. Um, however, I think blurring the lines between, um. Letting private groups make improvements on public property is something that we discourage all across the city, particularly in residential neighborhoods as well.
What about pottery, topiaries, things like that along the facade of a building and onto the sidewalk? Is that allowed?
Um, so.
Planners.
They would, they would not be able to encroach onto another property or into the right of way. Um, so if the tenant wanted to do something within the bounds of the parcel, um, then they could. The thing is that this building sits right on that parcel line. Um, you know, planning could reengage, um, Parks and Recreation. Um, however. I think, you know, from a planning standpoint, and just to step into the shoes of some folks in Parks and Rec. Um, it's not a desirable precedent to set.
So even along, even like right up against the building, a planter would not be allowed.
Along.
Right along the building or along the, where the columns are, if they wanted to have a, something, a little trellis or something up the side of the building that would be. A foot into the right of way, something like that would, would. Something to give the face of the building a little bit of a punch.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm.
Yeah, no, I know, I know. Um, and so the distinction is that the John Shields Parkway is not a, it's not right of way. It is a lot. Um, owned by the City of Dublin. Um. Uh, do you have anything to add from a legal perspective?
Um, I was just going to note that Nikki's exactly right, that generally, um. We, we try to, um. Keep from having private improvements installed in the right of way, um, or even in, of course, public parks, because then you get. Um, you know, ownership, maintenance, liability type of issues. So, um. Even something like a, a trellis against the side of the building, if that trellis is based in parkland, I think you raise. Similar questions with regard to that as well as, you know, the planned, master planning process for John Shields Parkway. Um, I'm, I'm sure, you know, I don't speak for Parks and Rec, but I'm sure that they. Want to have, uh, as much leeway in that process as possible without. You know, private installations, uh, having to be accounted for.
Now, that being said, there, there is no, there is no rule as to prevent the tenant from installing lighting on those, uh, the brick surfaces. So, you know, I, I'm essentially doodling here on, on my drawing and just putting some lighting around the side. Of course, I did some landscaping on the bottom too. But something that would soften the, the colonnades and, and add a little bit more. I, I mean, lighting is art, you know, you can get some pretty fantastic lighting. Light fixtures for the exterior of the building that would truly complement that porcelain tile along the, the entrance way. And would soften the corner next to the green space area that, that would really liven up. And create an inviting, warm environment around the tenant space, which then would invite more people into. The interior of the building to enjoy the, the, the open air and the lighting coming from exterior.
If I can just speak to the lighting, I have added a condition that the applicant adds lighting, um, around their tenant space, subject to staff approval. So we would work with them. Um, to provide something that's engaging, brand oriented, um, peaceful.
Thank you, Nikki. And Mr. O'Malley, would you be amenable to that condition?
Absolutely. I, I think, and, and, and I may have misunderstood at the very beginning, and this was not with staff. Uh, this was as we were going through the lease process, but, uh, my understanding was that we were not allowed to, there was only certain columns where we were allowed to even put our sign on. It was very specific as to where that sign could go, what columns we could put anything on. So we, we avoided. In, in the, in the, trying to move this along, we avoided even worrying about lighting at that point. Because we were even told where our sign was initially was on the wrong pole because certain poles couldn't, or columns couldn't have anything. So if it's okay for us to do it, I can promise you, I would love to have some lights out there. Absolutely. Well, we, I'd love to work with staff on that.
Yeah, Nikki, if that's a condition of, of Crawford Hoang, i- if that's something outside of the city, they have maybe some CCNR type regulations. Where they dictate where things can and cannot go.
I mean, with regards to signs, there were conceptual sign locations that were approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So. Target sign locations. Um, I don't believe one was located on the Greenway. That being said, we've since revised the master sign plan to allow, uh, the planning staff as well as, um. Crawford Hoang, some latitude to collaborate and work together to locate that signage appropriately. Um, so there may be some opportunities to relocate some of those signs, but there would be no prohibition on. Lighting of any kind being affixed to the building.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Back to Ms. Fox.
No, I, I was just going to say, you know, I, I think it's really important that, you know, we, of course, we want to comply with as many as of the. We want to comply with the regulations and, and I certainly understand about not putting, um, not creating landscape plan inside of a public park. But I can't imagine that we could not allow, um. Some interesting elements. Uh, the whole idea is to create a, a street image that is attractive. And, um, I, I would hate to see us cut ourselves off at the knees and not allow a. Um, a restaurant who has some really wonderful ideas of what a streetscape liveliness could look like. Um, to bind that so much. So, um, I would just encourage staff to help us, um, find that balance. Where we get the excitement at the street level we're looking for within the parameters of the code and that we, um. We look for imagination and design. We look for, um, lighting packages that would be, uh, attractive as you drive by and you walk by. And I, I applaud the applicant for wanting to have the transparency and open terracing. And the activity of being able to sit there, uh, as people walk by to, uh, to engage them. And so. And, you know, I would just hope that we, that we find ways, um, especially if we're not going to be doing a park here anytime soon. That will allow maybe some temporary planners or whatever until that, till that park is designed. Um, those are just my opinions. They don't really, they're not the, the planning commissions, but I think, but I think it's important that we make sure we get that street liveliness we're looking for.
All, all these things add up, right, Jane? That's what it, is what it comes down to. Um, question, question on that front. Uh, and maybe this is for Nikki or Jenny, i- if you could, if you could help me. Um, but I, how about this? All these suggestions will add up. Um, the, the entrance and, and, and Mr. O'Malley, we want your place to be great, right? We're trying to actually get you a little bit more, right? Um, i- is what it probably comes down to. And so my, my line of questioning here is actually going to go right at the sign. Um, I, I, I worry that, uh, it's a little, it's, it's a little wee. And that, uh, a more substantial sign could, could vastly help the, the sort of entry access. I just don't know what we're up against relative to this building. This context, um, what are, what are they allowed here? And are they up against it already?
Yeah. So, um, I. You know, obviously signs are not being reviewed and approved as part of this application. Um, that being said. Um, you know, the applicant will have an opportunity to revise their sign designs. And I do, I would agree with the commission. There is some opportunity there. Um, they are permitted a total of three signs, um, because they have frontage on to public rights of way. Um, and depending on the classification of the Greenway, I'd need to review that they may be permitted for.
I think they have. Frontage on three sides.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So, um, you know, they need to do a diversity of sign types, which will be engaging. Um, they, we do send all of our sign designs to a consultant in Cleveland, um, that, uh. Specializes in wayfinding. And so we get, um, some input from them based on the preliminary sign design and would ask. The applicant to make some minor revisions to address those, um, prior to us issuing a sign permit.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Just one follow up on that. And, and, uh, Mr. O'Malley, this is, this is mainly for you. As we're looking, especially, um, at, when you come back with those signs, the nice thing about Bridge Park is it is this. Meeting of art and destination along with the, the naturalistic, uh, plane of the, of the park adjacent to these properties. And so as you look at those signs and Nikki touched on the variety of signs, if you drive down, you'll notice there are two distinct types of, uh, uh, signs. In the Bridge Park District. There are those that are just, you, you could put them up in a museum and call them art. And there are those that are supposed to just get you to where you're going. Now, this is the branding. And so as you look at, we're not going to rebrand your business. You have icons, you have paid designers to come up with, you know, beautiful signage. But if you look at the application of that branding and know that, that the commission is willing to entertain that out of the box thinking. So you look at North Market and you look at like the awning over the top where they have the, the actual greenery growing. You know, that combination of, of fixture with usefulness, with branding, with engagement. We're looking for that type of designation to help people get in your front door.
We certainly appreciate that. And I hope I didn't go out of order here, but I thought I was supposed to turn the signs, um, into, there's a sign committee. Is that correct for Dublin? And, and we've submitted those, we, we, we submitted them to Crawford Hoang. And then have submitted them into the Dublin signage, signage. I apologize. I'm not sure the name of the group. But, uh, but we have submitted signs, uh, for permitting about four weeks ago. And, and you'll be happy to know three completely different types of signs. Um, if you're familiar with Kitchen Social today. We've got, um, lettering, uh, where it spells out Kitchen Social, each individual letter. And we have that. What we would plan that it would be the facade on Riverside Drive over all the windows up on top of that facade. We have a, think of an old movie theater sign, a vertical, um, sign where it spells out Kitchen Social with the logo. And then we had the smaller, um, blade sign because we wanted that visibility north, south as people were walking. So that front. Blade sign Riverside Drive was the, the letters. And then we, we, we asked for, I probably went a little big, which is probably why we had to send them back. Um, but we did a vertical, uh, sign that spelled out Kitchen Social's, uh, north, uh, up and down. So I need to, or if I should, or if you care, or if you'd like to, I'd be more than happy to, uh, send over the sign package that we submitted.
Thank you, Mr. O'Malley. So Nikki, I'm sure you can coordinate with the applicant for what needs to come next.
Can I?
Mr. Fishman?
Yeah, two things. I, I, I'm, I'm really excited to hear about creative signs and, 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 um. Um, I, I think they can be creative and it still be within the code. I think it's important to be within the code because businesses will change over the years. And once the code's violated. Then somebody puts, the next business puts up a fine that isn't that creative. So, um, I'm excited to hear about that. Also. Um, uh, if, if the, the brick, we're talking, we keep talking about the brick or the, uh, other material. Um, uh, is there any reason you can't use full brick? Um, uh, around the entrance?
That you would, you would, you're suddenly getting into adding a foundation.
Right.
Um, which, which in this context is problematic.
Okay. So that's, that, there is no foundation there. They didn't.
Not, not for, not for a brick wall, no.
Yeah. No, no, I'm not, I'm talking about the, 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 the facade around the door. We're talking about brick versus the, the, the other material.
There, there are structural concerns that we would have to break into the existing. Ears that have the existing structure in them to support all of that brick. So it's, it creates a. Not, not only a lot more work, but it wouldn't, we're not even sure how doable it is at this point. Um. And, and we would totally be messing up those existing brick beers. And we'd have to come in with some additional brick to try to match those. And there's a lot of technical challenges to that.
Okay, fine. Okay. I have no problem with that then. Um, I, I, I think that, that as said earlier, I'm kind of neutral. I'd go either way. Whatever the, my colleagues, uh, decide. I, 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 I think it'll look great. I'm, I, I'm excited about hearing about creative signs. Uh, the, the other thing is that I'm concerned about is landscaping. The other thing is that I'm concerned about is landscaping the park area. I think we'd say it's a dangerous precedent there, but I think you might work with the Parks Department and have the Park Department do landscaping. Because I think that we start setting a precedent that you can landscape the parks. We're going to have a lot of people landscaping the parks and sometimes their taste isn't, won't be as good as yours. So I think we got to be real careful there. But even a trellis on the building, I've seen some ugly trellises on buildings. So so I know yours wouldn't be, but I I think that we we have to be careful there. But yeah, I'm happy with either facade.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Any other comments from the Planning and Zoning Commission at this time? All right, looking back to the items on these particular discussion points. Going back to the administrative departure, the planning the planning department recommended disapproval of the administrative departure to permit less than eighty percent of the materials. The primary materials, this goes back to the the brick versus nichihah material. Looking to the commission for support of the disapproval or lack of support for the disapproval, trying to stay consistent with the documentations that we have here this evening.
I don't know how we say it. I'm fine with the nichihah, the nichihah.
Okay, Mr. Grimes? You're okay? Mr. Schneer? Ms. Fox? Okay, I can count to four. All right, the next one. And that one's an administrative departure on our agenda. It does not appear that there is a well, let me look at this. It does not appear that there's actually a motion on that.
There should be if it's not listed. Apologies.
All right.
And and that would be a motion in the affirmative, like, you know, however, and however, the board or the commission feels about it would be a motion to approve the administrative departure.
All right, so I will entertain a motion to approve the administrative departure.
So moved.
Mr. Supalack, do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Ms. Beal?
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Supalack?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman? Mr. Fishman?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Way?
Yes.
Mistress there?
Yes.
All right, now we're looking at the waivers. Nikki, do you have something that you can present on the screen, just so we can look at them at the same time? And we'll do the same with the minor project. Thank you. All right, so waivers is what we're considering next. The first one is planning recommends approval of a waiver for the number of entrances. And the second one is approval of a waiver for ground story, street facing. I will hear those together. Looking for a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Ms. Beal?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Schneer?
Yes.
Mr. Way?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Supalack?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. And then Nikki, on the minor project, I believe we have a fourth condition. Yes, thank you. So planning and zoning, if you would like to review those items, noting that the fourth item, the applicant add a light fixture on each column subject to staff approval is new this evening and departure from your packet material.
Can I make a comment about that? I would hate to restrict them to a light fixture on each column. I think they should work with staff to create a lighting design. Yeah.
I I agree. So Nikki, if we could have that adjusted, the applicant work with staff to provide exterior light fixtures and leave it amorphous, not denoting each.
I'd like to see them be able to have some creativity with that. And then and then also on I guess we've already passed this, the doorway. Where are we past?
No, that that would go in minor project. If we are looking to add a different requirement that the applicant work with staff to provide more inviting entrance. So looking back to the applicants on that would be that be something acceptable to you, understanding that your sign plan is already in, but this is separate from that to create a more inviting entrance way. And I'm seeing a head now, Mr. O'Malley. Thank you.
Sorry, yes.
Yeah, I would like to see that as a condition because I think that is something in the code that is required, that we have a more significant entrance way.
Thank you.
And then one final question. Did you, would you like to retain the condition that they revised the nichihah to brick or eliminate it?
I believe we had four in support of the nichihah. So if you could do head nods again, just verifying that I'm not crazy. Okay, thank you. And Mr. Way, did you?
Yeah, the lighting, I would wouldn't want to limit it to just a lighting fixture. I think they should come back with a lighting package. And it could be all sorts of other things, right? It doesn't it doesn't have to be a light on a on the column. It could be a projector light or something. I don't know. And I also want to point out to the commission that there's lighting in the overhang that I don't know if they can control that too, but that lighting could also be factored into the whole lighting concept for that facade.
Nikki, quick question. Will this come back to us in any way? Signage package, any of these packages, will we see it again, or is this all?
No, this is the the final opportunity to make comment unless this application were to be tabled this evening. And then signs are not under the review of the planning commission unless they deviate from the master sign plan.
Yep, and I would just issue a challenge to staff, you know. I know that we are looking at code and interpretation of code and making sure that every, you know, T is crossed and I is dotted. But where we have especially, you know, the creativity, you've heard Ms. Fox give suggestions over the last few years about different ways to accomplish this incorporation of art and placemaking and, you know, the area where you want to sit and and congregate. But we have some architectural features in this design, and I'm looking specifically at that porcelain wall that give kind of this flowing and this water feel and that sort of thing. So please know that that we are, as the applicant is looking for differentiation and something to set this building apart from others, that I think that you'll you'll see and you'll hear a consensus among the planning and zoning commission that we do want to help them to create that that inviting atmosphere. So if the lighting package has the, you know, luminescence of water across that open space parkway, I think that you would see some support. We're not going to dictate the creativity of the designer, but we do want to engage the creativity of the designer. All right, so commission, any other final comments? And Nikki, could I have you re-present those conditions? Okay, all right. Mr. Way, is is number four now accomplishing what you were looking for?
Yeah, again, it's a lighting package would be a complete kind of look at what are the options for lighting for facade and
Perfect.
And and the site, yep.
Thank you. So commission, looking to you, I will entertain a motion of approval of the minor project with it looks like the amended contains four conditions.
So motion to approve. Seconded.
Thank you, Mr. Supalack, and thank you, Mr. Way. Ms. Beal?
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Way?
Yes.
Mr. Supalack?
Yes.
Mr. Schneer?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
So, Mr. O'Malley, it has been a pleasure with you and Mr. Birch this evening. We certainly look forward to seeing some work on this corner. Well, corners, I suppose I could say. And we certainly welcome you to the city of Dublin, and we think that you'll you'll fit in wonderfully here, and we're looking forward to patronizing the business.
Well, we thank you for your time. We shouldn't look forward to serving everyone in the city of Dublin, the surrounding area. And again, just one more time, I think Nikki and her staff really did a nice job working with us. So they were very patient on three or four WebEx calls, kind of walking us through some of the things. And so I just want to make sure that that's noted, that that they were very, very helpful to us to get to this point today.
Thank you, Mr. O'Malley, and we certainly appreciate the feedback. We think they're pretty great too, but we're a little partial.
Right, very good. We look forward to having you, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
All right. Well, ladies and gentlemen, that was a fun one. So hopefully, the next one is is just as fun. We have Bridge Street District, Bridge Park Block G. So this evening cases one, two, and three in our somewhat out of order agenda will be heard together, and I will read those cases into the record. One is twenty dash one nine nine CU conditional use. Two is twenty dash zero four five FDP, Final Development Plan. And three is sixteen dash zero four four FP, Final Plat. The first application, twenty dash one ninety nine CU is a conditional use request to permit Bridge Park Block G, Building G two, the column garage to be unlined along a along a public street, Moonie Street. The second application, twenty dash zero four five FDP is a request for the construction of a four-story residential building, a four-story parking garage, and a five-story mixed-use building with a point zero, excuse me, point five eight acre open space for Bridge Park Block G, Zone Bridge Street District, Scioto River neighborhood. The site is southeast of the intersection of Bridge Park Avenue and Riverside Drive. Finally, the third application, twenty dash one five zero CU is a request for a recommendation of approval to City Council for a final plat of approximately two point two eight acre site, Lot Nine, establishing public access easements for open space in conjunction with Bridge Park Block G. And Nikki, it looks like we have the pleasure of hearing from you on this application, so welcome back. You didn't get much of a break.
No worries. Okay. Well, good evening. As mentioned, this is a request for review and approval of a final development plan with conditional use and a recommendation on a final plat to City Council for Bridge Park Block G. Block G is located north of Bridge Park Avenue, south of Teller Ridge Drive, and east of sorry, Moonie Street and west of Dale Drive. This site is bounded by an existing street network map. You'll also notice to the northeast of the site and additional areas highlighted, which is also proposed for improvement with this application. So here you can see the existing site is presently undeveloped, although is surrounded by development with Bridge Park to the west as well as existing attached single family to the east, which is the Sycamore Ridge Apartments. So here are some existing conditions photos today. In these photos, you are looking west and south as well as north and west. In the left-hand photo, you can see Bridge Park Avenue in the background as well as the undeveloped site in the foreground. So there are three parts to this proposal this evening, the first being the conditional use to permit a parking garage that is unlined with commercial space. As mentioned, this request is only along Moonie Street, which is interior to the Bridge Park development. This parking garage is lined along Dale Drive, which is a the principal frontage street. Next, the final development plan to approve the development of three buildings. These buildings are a mixed-use office building that is approximately one hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet in size, a parking structure containing three hundred and twenty-seven parking spaces and a residential building containing eighty-six condominium units as well as point five acres of open space. The open space is distributed between the Block G as well as the off-site open space, specifically the dog park. Finally, this is a request for a recommendation to City Council to forward a final plat. The plat combines three existing parcels, all owned by Crawford Hoyng, and establishes public access easements for open spaces. So here on your screen, you can see the site plan left is north on this plan. Bridge Park Avenue, Dale Drive, Teller Ridge Drive, and Moonie Street bound the site. The office building is located at the intersection of Bridge Park Avenue and Moonie Street. This is Building G one. On the ground story of that building, there is commercial space, including opportunities for retail and restaurant as well as a lobby to the upper story office building. Centrally located on the site is the four-story parking structure. This parking structure is accessed via Dale Drive and Moonie Street. The ground story of the parking structure contains a variety of support services as well as a number of parking spaces to support both the residential and commercial uses on this block. Finally, in the northern portion of the site is a U-shaped condominium building. This building contains a point one nine acre amenity space which is not included in the open space calculation, although does enhance the overall green space provided across the block. So with that, the applicant is also requesting consideration of a parking plan. The parking plan is intended to assess parking across the Bridge Park development. So similar to open space, parking can be looked at in a holistic manner, and it is often prudent to do so, particularly in areas where you have a significant amount of mixed-use development and the opportunity for shared parking with various uses peaking at various times of day. So this block is proposed to provide a total of three hundred and sixty parking spaces. That's the combination of on-street and structured parking spaces. Five hundred and twelve parking spaces would be required based on the combination of residential uses and commercial uses. The applicant, after conducting a parking analysis in line with the Urban Land Institute metrics, is requesting approval of a parking plan to co-park with Block C. Block C is immediately to the west of Block G. And you'll notice in this plan contains a sizable parking structure. The combined parking that is proposed to be provided between Blocks G and C is one thousand three hundred and six parking spaces which, based on the combination of uses in the study done by Crawford Hoyng, would meet the need for this development, although would not meet the numeric requirement identified in the zoning code. Next, the open space is a primary consideration when looking at development of new mixed-use buildings within Bridge Park. The open space is also calculated similar to parking on a ratio basis given the combination of uses. So for this site, a total of point four four acres of open space is required. The applicant is proposing to provide point five eight acres of open space exceeding the open space allocation requirement. So a total of three pocket plazas are proposed. These are located at the intersection of Bridge Park Avenue and Moonie Street, Moonie Street and Teller Ridge Drive, as well as Dale Drive and Teller Ridge Drive, a A uh, Pocket Park, which is a linear park located immediately north of the office building and south of the parking garage, uh, connects um, Mooney Street to Dale Drive. There is a significant grade change between Mooney Street and Dale Drive. Um, therefore, the uh, linear Pocket Park is a tiered park, with the lower level being along Mooney Street and the upper level being along Dale Drive. The accessible path between the two um, is an elevator that is interior um, to the office building, as well as an exterior stair. Finally, um, off-site open space is provided with a approximately seventeen thousand square foot dog park, which is located at the intersection of Dale Drive and Teller Ridge Drive. Um, this is intended to provide an amenity not only for Bridge Park residents, but also for uh, residents of the Bridge Street District as a whole, um, that may uh, need an opportunity um, to exercise their dogs. So here you can see I've highlighted the Pocket Parks on the screen. Um, those are at each corner. The Pocket uh, Park is that linear space there, and then finally, the Dog Park. So in detail, uh, with a final development plan, all final landscape plans are required to be provided. Um, in review of the landscape plans, um, planning staff, as well as uh, the city forester and uh, horticulture team are recommending a number of modifications to plant selections um, based on both plant diversity and um, plant hardiness, uh, given um, the microclimate of this type of development. So here you can see we're looking at the Pocket Park. This area is approximately uh, six thousand square feet in size. Uh, the lower level is shown on the left-hand side of your screen, which provides a gathering plaza for um, visitors to step out of the walking way and to gather in front of the main entrance to the office building. The central image you can see provides gathering space um, with uh, outdoor workspace, as well as um, opportunities to gather and dine outdoors. And then finally, on the right-hand side of your screen, you'll see informal um, movable tables and chairs, as well as in the background and foreground there, you can see the scrim screen, um, which is a metal panel that is proposed to clad the entirety of the south elevation of the parking garage. This screen is proposed to have a graphic, which will be a um, place-making element that is unique to anywhere in Bridge Park, as well as the Bridge Street District and the city of Dublin as a whole. Um, this is intended to be a naturalized um, image, although the applicant has committed to coordinating with the Dublin Arts Council to select the final art. So the Dog Park, um, as mentioned, is approximately seventeen thousand square feet in size. This Dog Park um, creates uh, curvilinear pods for uh, play. Um, it includes a artificial turf, um, which is at the recommendation of the uh, Parks and Recreation Department, um, to ensure the um, aesthetics of that turf, as well as the viability of that turf over time, given the limited size of this area. The area will include walking paths, seating opportunities, charismatic folders, as well as a number of uh, shade trees. A six-foot fence is proposed to enclose the area, as well as significant perimeter screening, um, in order to both soften the appearance of this area from the public rights of way, as well as to um, provide um, visual separation for dogs. Finally, um, Pocket Plaza designs have been provided. The two smallest Pocket Plazas, which are located along Teller Ridge Drive, uh, primarily provide um, opportunities to sit and step out of of the walking way, um, have ornamental trees, as well as some hardscape. The primary Pocket Plaza here is the one at the intersection of Bridge Park Avenue and Mooney Street. Here you'll notice um, a water feature, as well as movable furniture and a raised planting area. In the open space plan, uh, you'll notice that not all of this area is dedicated as open space. There will be an opportunity in the corner uh, for a private tenant to occupy that space as a patio, um, and to remain separate from the Pocket Plaza area. With that, um, three buildings are proposed to be developed. Um, Building G one, this is the one cited on Bridge Park Avenue, is a corridor building type, and is the building type that was used to evaluate all the code requirements. Um, as mentioned, the upper stories of this building are office, and this building um, provides a unique architectural connector between Buildings G one and G two. Uh, this is intended to provide access for office tenants at every level to the parking garage, as well as to create a uh, unique um, Pocket uh, Plaza um, on the lower level of that main uh, linear open space. The primary building materials are brick, um, in various colors, um, primarily gray and white, as well as concrete masonry units, um, and panel, and uh, glass storefront systems. You'll notice in this elevation, there are a number of balconies for um, or perspective, rather, there are a number of balconies for the office tenants, and these will be highlighted with a teak metal wall panel, um, which will, you know, provide a slightly warmer aesthetic and highlight the main level. So with that, um, Building G two is the parking structure. Uh, this building supports uh, the surrounding buildings, and the ingress and egress are on the east and west sides of the structure. Um, and as mentioned, this contains a number of support services. This um, rendering is of the east elevation, which is Dale Drive, so you'll see those lined commercial spaces here. Um, those are three spaces that are intended to have a very um, warehouse aesthetic with tall ceilings and um, large windows. The parking structure is primarily clad in brick and uses uh, metal uh, window frame inserts. So here you can see this is the area along Mooney Street requiring the conditional use. Finally, Building G three is a four-story apartment building. This building, you'll see here in this perspective, is offset, and that is to accommodate the grade change across the site. So you have a lower-level half and an upper-level half, um, which provides for some architectural diversity and movement across the building. This building contains eighty-six units of various sizes and is primarily clad in brick and fiber cement siding. Finally, with this, a um, recommendation of approval of a final plat is recommended. Um, very uh, minor details, um, such as establishing public access easements. Staff is recommending approval of a conditional use, as well as two administrative departures, thirty waivers, um, which I would be happy to go into detail should you have questions on any uh, one of them. Um, however, they do vary from uh, transparency to blank walls, to building entrances. Vertical facade divisions um, are a a request on many of the buildings, as well as materials, um, and the adjacency of various building types to one another, um, siding of buildings, tower elements, um, as well as occupied space. Um, so with that, we also are recommending approval of the parking plan and recommending approval of the final development plan um, with eleven conditions. These conditions are intended to address not only items that are uh, needed to confirm compliance with code, but also to ensure all final details, including site furnishings, bicycle parking, um, as well as loading spaces are uh, provided uh, to planning staff. Finally, uh, the city engineer is requesting additional sidewalk area along Dale Drive, um, to ensure enough clear circulation distance. And um, planning staff is um, requesting that the applicant establish and execute a public access easement for the Dog Park. Um, that would be a separate mechanism outside of the plating process, um, and that should be uh, complete prior to issuance of a permit, and that all final landscape details be revised um, as outlined in the staff report in collaboration with the uh, city forester, horticulture team, as well as the landscape zoning inspector. So with that, I know that our um, applicants are here this evening, um, ready to, you know, speak to the application, and uh, their design professionals are here as well to talk through any details and questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki, and welcome back. It's nice to see you again. Um, be- before we go into applicant, I I'd like to stay with uh, questions for staff at this time. This is, you know, uh, Mr. Fishman in the pre-meeting as we were getting ready to start. He made a comment about this was a lot of reading, and this certainly was a lot of reading. And so I I'd like to give the the commission opportunity to ask questions for staff before we continue on. Ms. Fox?
Nikki, I was going to ask you, did the square footage of the buildings, total square footage of the buildings increase since the 2020 review?
It actually decreased. So the, for the office building, the total height of the building was decreased from uh, six stories to five stories.
Oh, and and you know, I apologize. I don't mean the total uh, square footage. I meant uh, the footprints of the building. Did the footprints get any larger? Because it seems like as I look at it, we're covering, we have a lot of coverage quite high, so I wondered if they're increased.
I'm not aware of any um, increases or decreases. The site plan and the foundations have stayed um, pretty similar.
And can you just clarify the use of the, on the corner of Mooney and Bridge Park? You said that part of that Pocket Park would be utilized for private dining, which, does that mean that 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 square footage would change of that Pocket Park?
So the applicant has already accounted for that, so the the entire area at that corner is not designated as open space, only a fraction of that is designated, and then another portion is reserved for outdoor dining, so that in the future, we can avoid situations for outdoor dining, maybe occupying or encroaching an open space.
So then the public open space would probably be where the fountain is and outside of that, and anything interior of that would become private. Is that correct?
Correct.
The way it goes, okay. And um, and then, um, I'm sure it it shows on here, there is a a ramp that makes it ADA compliant into the perimeter, into the pedestrian midway? Is that correct? Is there a ramp that goes from one side?
There's not a ramp. There's not a ramp, so it's um, it's an actually an elevator, so you would need to enter a lobby and use an elevator. Um,
To get to the pedestrian midway?
To get to the upper story, yeah.
The upper story of the pedestrian midway. And last question is, is a pedestrian midway um, allowed to count as open space, or is it a, oh, is it a sidewalk?
So a mid-block pedestrian way is allowed to traverse through an open space. Um, open spaces are required to have a certain proportion. Um, a waiver is requested to the um, proportions of this open space. Um, but that waiver is consistent with waivers that have been approved in every other block at Bridge Park.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Other questions from the commission?
Nikki, do we know if that park is kind of along the lines of the footprint um, adjustment? Do we happen to know if that park pressed down a little bit since the last time we saw us? The midway park?
I don't believe so, but I would have to defer to the um, the site civil engineer um, or the landscape designer.
Nikki, now now may actually be a a good time if uh, the commission and the chair would allow to to let uh, Russ run through a a description of the uh, the changes that the plan made since the last meeting, and I always say that because I think it probably would answer a lot of the questions that that the commissioners have. I think they're good questions, and a lot of that, I think, would be contained in his presentation, if you'd indulge him to run through that.
Yeah, uh, let's let's hold for just one minute, Nikki. I have one more question on parking. So in the staff report, we were told that uh, it looks like uh, if my notes are correct, five hundred and twelve spaces were required, three hundred and sixty are provided. However, the applicant went through and did a parking study and submitted that for review. Uh, and it looks like thirteen hundred and six parking is what is provided between the two parcels, or the three parcels, I don't remember, I'm sorry. The one new that is actually three parcels, plus the adjacent property in the other blocks. Uh, so with that thirteen hundred and six, what would have been the totality of the requirement? I didn't see that in the staff report.
Yeah, so um, i- in Block C, a parking plan was approved for a reduced parking count. Um, so it would cumulatively be two parking plans being approved, both for a reduced parking count. Um, that being said, just from a um, you know, historic perspective, um, when the Bridge Street District Code was adopted, we were trying to balance um, the history we have in Dublin as a suburban community and providing enough parking with this um, you know, kind of new potential reality that we would have mixed-use development. And I don't think we anticipated any development that would be this dense. And um, you know, from a staff perspective, we do have reservations about over-parking Bridge Park. Um, so it does, I think, make sense, given how much larger the C Block Garage is, that these two garages would be compatible, but both blocks will be deficient. Um, and C Block was approved for approximately one hundred fewer spaces than would be required.
Um, Yeah, so so I just want to highlight, you know, before we go into discussion items, um, it it sounds like the each of the parcels independently is underparked, and this application, uh, underparked according to code. Let me clarify that. Underparked according to the the code and the design criteria. However, uh, the staff report that highlights the uh, combination of Block C with Block G, each independently is underparked according to code. Uh, and so I just want to highlight that. Um, at this time, um, Mr. uh, Mr. Hunter, I guess, is is, yes, you are going to take us on a ride and and let us know what's changed from the last time we were here together to now.
Yes, yeah. Uh, hey, everybody. Uh, good evening. So, um, yeah, I just, I'll be brief, um, because I know there's a lot to cover, but there were a few things that I just wanted to make sure that we highlighted. Obviously, we've we've been here several times for this block. Um, it has evolved um, in in use and and shape, um, to some degree, though, to answer some of your questions about earlier, to my knowledge, the the shape of that park is exactly the same as it was before, that 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 office building and the proportions of it are are very specific to make sure that we're hitting, that we're getting the right sizes necessary for office spaces, right? So as brokers are coming to us with with tenants that we have the space we need in order to accommodate them, so um, that building really has not changed.
One thing I'll note, Russ, just real quick to to point out to uh, Jane's point, that the the one area that did change was the ground floor retail did shrink, and Russ will probably get into that shortly. Because we pushed the wall of the retail spaces back ten feet, uh, and then allowed to create an overhang above that space for outdoor seating, and we did that to open up some more space on Bridge Park Avenue, which we heard at the last meeting was something that that the commission really wanted to see, was more breathing room on the ground plane. was more breathing room on the ground plane. So if you compare the two footprints, you'll actually see that the, the footprint of the, the building has actually gotten smaller, and it's allowed for more open space out on Bridge Park. It's also, it's also gotten smaller back in, in the connector, the mid-block pedestrian way. That has pulled in to allow larger gathering open space down on Mooney Street and also up on Dale Drive. I just want to let you know that there actually were changes, and they went in the direction that I think you were looking for.
Nelson's two steps ahead of me. So.
Sorry, Russ, I'll shut up.
All right, so I'm going to share my screen, and hopefully I don't screw this up. All right, can everybody see an image? Yes, perfect. All right. So I, I just wanted to highlight a few things. The first few slides here is really just, you know, one of the things I think that, you know, we hear time and time again, is the variety of open spaces, the opportunities for people to be able to, sort of step off from the sidewalk and, and, and take a break from the, you know, the pedestrian traffics that comes back and forth. And then also the softening of, really, the foundations of some of these buildings. And so we've, we've really taken a hard look at how we can do that in this block. And so the, these first few slides, and these are, these are images you've all seen, but just to highlight is these little places that we've created in, in the corners. Also, at the entrances to the building, the residential building is significantly backed from the sidewalk to allow for these foundation plantings, to allow for these spaces to happen. Now, it, it makes a whole heck of a lot of sense on the north end of the site, where this residential is, and then as you work your way towards the south, towards the office building. And that's where we, we kind of get back to Bridge Park Avenue to more of the, the urban environment. And so the, you know, the open spaces, they, they morph a little bit into what you see here. So that water feature that we've talked a lot about, both the combination of the sort of flexible open seating, but then also permanent seating that's attached to that. You can see the, the people sitting here along the, the wood bench that creates that, that outdoor planting area. And what we, you know, what we spoke about before, I mean, obviously, when you look at this space, the materials and everything create a cohesive open space that goes effectively from the intersection back to, back to the facade of the building. But that being said, we've, we've tried to be a little bit smarter here. Lessons learned about making sure that we're, that we're carving out the appropriate amount of space along the building facade, so that when that tenant comes with some really, really neat idea about how they want to engage the open space, they have the ability to do that. So that is really, you know, as we talked, Jane, you talked a little bit about, you know, where that line draws. That's, that's really what we're doing here. And as a side note, something that you'll see in some of these renders is sort of another lesson learned, both in how we present these, these projects, but also how we execute them, is that, you know, we're, we're trying not to design the ground floor storefront. We're, we've rendered them out to show what some of the different ones can be. But the, what we've learned in the past is, is that if we put it in, they're going to use it, because it's already there. And so what, what happens as a result is you don't get the variety. You don't get the variety of the tenant storefronts that you would have gotten if you allowed them the opportunity to design it themselves. And so that's, that is, that is definitely a lesson learned. You'll see some storefronts reflected in here, but just keep that in mind. You know, you, you could imagine how this, how this could, could evolve over time as a tenant comes in with their signage, with their, their furniture, trellises, you name it. There's a lot of ways in which this will continue to evolve. So just wanted to keep that in mind. So the open space in, in the middle, there's a couple of things here that I wanted to point out. This is one that's actually going to be fairly unique to Bridge Park in that by creating that stair in the middle and by, that allowed us to flatten out the two spaces to the west and to the east, it actually makes for a more usable space. And so we really challenged our landscape designer, MKSK, really to think about these as, as little rooms within a space. I think they've done a terrific job of it. You could see that, you know, these could be used for a variety of reasons. You know, it couldn't, it, it's not just somebody that might sit here to, to sit on their laptop or to read a book. But you could actually see a group of people coming out here to use it as a conference space or, or, you know, any number of things. So I think that, that this is something that, that we've been really excited about is what a space like this will lend us. The other thing on this particular image, that scrim that Nikki mentioned earlier. So, you know, we've got, we've got a lot of parking garages with, with metal facades around Bridge Park. We wanted to do something different here, and our architects actually brought this to us. It's a, it's effectively a scrim that is paintable. And so I immediately called David Gion over at the Dublin Arts Council and said, hey, we've got this really neat idea. It's an interior courtyard. It's a facade that doesn't immediately face any of the streets. It's kind of a discovery as you walk through this. We'd love to work with you. We don't know exactly what it wants to look like. We have some ideas. But we'd love to work with you, and, and he was just super excited about the opportunity. So, you know, that is, that is something that we will absolutely be working with both staff and with the Dublin Arts Council as we continue to, to figure out exactly what that wants to look like. Also mentioned that the liner on, on Dale Drive, so that you can see that here in the foreground, there's a, a public open space that's attached to it, so the space sort of flows out. There was, you know, there was talk about, you know, whether this be studio space. There's, there's a lot of things that this could be used for, and quite frankly, we're kind of excited to see what, how it evolves. The other thing that I wanted to, to point out here, specific to this garage, and again, I always like to, I always like to point out lessons learned. When we did D Block, and it was all complete, we, we walked outside and we looked at the garage, and, and we all kind of said, wow, we like this one a lot better. And I think one of the reasons why the D Block garage is, is more successful than some of the previous ones is because of the proportion of the windows. And so we took that lesson and applied it here, meaning that garages typically have these larger window bays. Basically, the structures are 30 feet and 60 feet. And we've, we've added intermediate piers so that the, the window spacing, the base spacing here actually looks more like a traditional occupied building. So that's, that's just something that you see as you make your way around, around the garage that makes it maybe a little less garagi. I believe that's a, a term that was coined in a previous planning and zoning meeting. Dog park, again, this is something we've talked about a lot. This is still number one on our tenant wishlist. Something that, that everybody that lives in it appreciates Bridge Park has, has wanted. So as we were working with staff on this one, we, we came across, there's actually a very, very similarly sized urban dog park in Washington Square down in Cincinnati. And so we, we took a lot of lessons from that about the materials, the design, the rules governing it, and applied them to this, figuring, you know, they've had many, many years to make sure that they got it right. We want to make sure that we apply all of those lessons learned to this, continuing to work with staff to make sure that we do get this right. Because certainly, I think this is something that will be well-used and well-loved, not just by people that live at Bridge Park, but all of the surrounding community. This is a quick one, but just to show we're, we're handling service just a little bit different on this. We, we actually had an opportunity with the flattening of that middle open space to create effectively a tunnel that, that connects all of the back of house in that office building. So all those retail tenants along Bridge Park Avenue and Mooney Street into the garage, into the trash room, without having to take it across the sidewalk. In addition, being thoughtful about loading spaces, both for the office and restaurant, but also the, the condominium to make sure that there's places where we can unload, get people moved in. Parking, talked a lot about parking earlier. 2,800 structured parking spaces is what we currently have at Bridge Park. And honestly, at, at this point, with it being so interconnected, it's really, really difficult to think about it as, as any one block. We almost have to think about it as a complete system. You know, the ULI studies, we've, we've done all of those and meet their criteria just with the C and B and G blocks that we've discussed tonight. Though, though, to be perfectly honest, we've been out there, and I think we've, we've talked about this before. We've been out there with clickers and counters on the most beautiful sunny day, when all of the patios are completely full. All the offices are still humming, and there are still, in, in those particular times, we counted 470 spaces unutilized in that C block garage. And the other thing to keep in mind, so we've, we've actually done improvements inside the garage. The lobby that is to the east that would serve G block originally had fire doors, because it's a firewall that separates it from the liner. We've since gone back and added glass to those doors, fire-rated glass to those doors, so that there's a visual connection. As you're on that side of the garage, you can see G block through the garage. You can see where you're going. It's just a lot more inviting. And thinking about it in terms of how the rest of Bridge Park operates, if you think about, say you're at Hen Quarter, and you park in the C block garage, the, the walk from Hen Quarter to the C block garage is effectively exactly the same as the walk from the C block garage to the open space at the corner of Mooney and Bridge Park Avenue. So when those restaurants are occupied, it, it's all virtually identical. Again, it's, it's really just acting as one system at this point. This is just on the, the fourth floor. I snapped a quick picture today just to show that, that the, the glass doors, the signage and wayfinding, and actually seeing through to what is right now a, a big mud hill, but eventually you'll be looking right at the, the parking garage across the street. And Nelson mentioned earlier, we actually did push back the, the facade of, of the, the first floor of this building, basically right underneath this, the shroud that you see here. So we pushed that facade back, a couple of reasons. One, that's where we were getting awfully close to the right of way. So we wanted to make sure that tenants had adequate space for their outdoor dining. More important now than ever. But also kind of allowed us to let, let the, the, the public path ebb and flow a little bit. Going back to some of Jane's comments earlier about just making sure that there's a place to pull off from the, from the pedestrian freeway. And, and as I mentioned earlier, you know, this is, this building in particular has been a real case study in making sure that we're hitting the right size of floor plates. Now, this is about 25,000 square feet, just to make sure that any possible company that would want to come to Dublin, that call Dublin home, has an opportunity to do it here, because the, the plates are really are right size for what the market seems to be looking for right now. Versus some of, some of our other buildings with site constraints didn't have that ability because they were just a little bit too narrow per the, the road layout. Here, just to show you the, the composite, obviously, we talked a little bit about the, the garage being lower, and that was, you can really see it in this, in this lower image. If you recall from our, our previous encounter, that garage was significantly taller, which meant that this tower right here was significantly taller. And it, it, it just, it wasn't quite working with the residential building right next to it. So being able to bring that garage level down, really working your way from the five-story on Bridge Park Avenue, which is, which is to the right in this image, and then working your way down towards the more residential scale to the north, we think has been highly successful. And this was the last thing, and Nikki already sort of touched on this, but just using the grade to our advantage, trying to, to break this building down. Previous iterations of this had a flat corner, so basically ran the, the length of, I believe this is taller ridge. The other thing just to note is that with this, that design, we're now completely lining at least the north half of that garage, so that we're really only seeing the short sides of the garage. And that's, that's really all I, I had, that I wanted to just make sure that, that, that we covered, that everyone understood. Obviously, we've got our entire design team here to answer questions. You know, any specific questions whatsoever, but, and, and if you've got any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
As I'll usually do, I'll, I'll chime in for one last thing, just because we heard a couple of questions about parking during the last meeting, and also to start this one. Our, our counts, just to give you a specific idea of where we ended up, we looked at the, at holistically, right, not just the C garage, because what Russ mentioned was, was how many spaces we had, you know, 400 or so extra spaces in the C garage. We also went around to all the garages at Bridge Park at the same time and counted spaces everywhere in Bridge Park on a 74-degree night, when all the patios were full and the restaurants were full. And we had 1,884 empty spaces at that time at Bridge Park, holistically. As we look at, at what we're adding in the next block with, with 84 residential units, some retail space, but also a lot of office that are empty at, after hours. What that means is that we're actually going to add to that surplus for events like the Dublin Market, for events, the other things that, that occur. We're adding 100 surplus spaces every night. That'll be free in, in the G garage that don't exist today, in addition to those 1,800 spaces that are free right now. And an additional 200 spaces on weekend mornings and weekend evenings at, at times when people might be coming here. So I just wanted to put any concerns you might have to, have to rest about whether or not we looked at the, looked at the whole ecosystem, and if we were making the situation better, or if we were making the situation worse by what we're doing, and we're actually approving it to the tune of 100 to 200 spaces. And, you know, the Bridge Street Code has the, the code-required recommendations. If you don't put together a parking plan, the parking plan is also a code-allowed means of meeting the parking requirement within the city. So we are meeting the parking requirement per code. We're just meeting it with a parking plan, not with a prescriptive count of, and really, at this point, an outdated prescriptive count of X number of spaces for X group that we are delivering. So that, that's just one thing I wanted to mention, because I know it is kind of an important topic. With, with that, I'll, I'll stop talking and put it back to the chair. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, gentlemen. Looking to the commission now for questions for the applicant. Mr. Fishman?
Question? Yes. When I read through this, and I appreciate the fact that you're overparked. However, someday, those buildings aren't going to be controlled or owned by the same people. Are there cross easements in that parking so that we can't have one garage, you know, filled, one empty, and, and have a problem with parking downtown?
Those are actually public parking garages, so that would never be the case.
Okay, so anybody can park anywhere, anytime?
That is correct.
Okay, good.
Other questions? Yes, Mr. Way?
I had a couple little questions that kind of puzzled me when I was looking at the materials samples for the, for the whole block. I caught this green color on the sample board, and I was like, where is that? And then I discovered it. It's at the entrance to the office building, which I understand you're trying to call out the office building. But, but I was looking for that color somehow to have a meaningful play in the rest of either the office building or the whole block. And it seems like it's a real one-off. And I was just curious, is that a hangover from the previous proposal? Or is it very deliberate that that's the color that you want to accentuate the office building entrance?
Jeff or Dan, would you like to take that, or would you like me to? Our architects are actually on this call, so I feel like they should answer that.
Hi, this is Dan Peavy. I'm an architect with MA. Yeah, I can answer the question. The, the color was meant to kind of draw attention to that kind of niche as that piece sits back, so that as you're walking down the street and you look, and it just grabs your eye and helps visually pull you up into that Upper Plaza area that we've been discussing. That was the intention of that. So it is kind of a specific and, again, just to draw you into that park area.
Okay, one other thing, one other thing that I'll note. We just recently had an interior design meeting for the, the public spaces inside that office building. And I think there's some real opportunity that we just haven't quite gotten to yet about the inside coming outside and vice versa. So that for the office users, it's, it, it doesn't, that, that color and that material doesn't just stop at the storefront.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Way. Looking back to the commission. Ms. Fox?
I, I want to follow up on that, and the
I, I want to follow up on that. In the upper plaza, the steps that lead to the upper plaza. Do you, I don't sense that I would know that I was going to enter into an upper plaza just by the steps. And maybe it's just the, you know, the little visual we have here, but it, it almost looks like it's going into the entrance to a building. How will it, how will one discover that that's going to lead to a pocket park? What will be the indicator? You said that you're going to be doing some more things, but I, I can't help but wonder if, if that's, if that's, if that's leading to the midway plaza, I'm taking it.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, you know, I would just, I would just wonder what would make people feel like they would be, that would be either a midway pedestrian way or even leads to a plaza, because it looks like it's going into a building.
Right, we've, we've opened that up as much as we can to again, allow for the business lobby. But I, if I remember correctly, it's about fourteen feet wide and the stairs really span that whole opening. So physically, we're again, trying to maximize what we have. And visually what we're, we're doing is again, with the color and taking that color up the stairs and on the scrim of the garage. And then again, at night, we're, we're looking at lighting that, so it is very inviting. And it is intentional and obvious that anyone can go up into that upper, upper plaza.
I think it's also would be good to show a, a plan or an elevation through there, you know, that, that green, that green box that we're talking about is not the office entry, it's actually the entry to, to the public garage and public space. It also provides a publicly accessible elevator twenty-four seven to traverse the distance between the lower plaza and the upper plaza. So people who are riding the elevator down from the, the upper levels, they'll be able to, to, to do so. Ride the elevator down and as they land at the mid level, they'll look out, well, first of all, they'll look out over this beautiful open space on their way down the elevators. And then once they hit the ground floor, they'll be able to walk out of this box into, into that space. Might, might be worth showing the floor plan again, or perhaps a, an interior rendering to give Jane a sense of what it is that I'm describing. Somebody wants their screen share.
Does that green translate up into the courtyard too, or is it just down at the Mooney Street level?
I, I think Dan will say it kind of wraps around the corner to draw you back. There's also indications to pull you back in there of, of this, the artistic scrim that you can see glimpses of it as you look back in that space too, I think is the idea.
Yeah, I think both, both the green on that, the, the elevator entry and the, the green works its way back. The scrim that we talked about in the open space actually comes through this, the, comes through and you can see it on the other side as well. So those materials both carry through. And, and the other thing to note, if you, if you're looking at those elevations, it, it's no accident either that the, where you see the stairs and you look directly above the stairs, there's glass. That, I mean, you can effectively, that, that little connector piece is, is very narrow. And so you can see right through it. That, it's a, that, that was intentional as well, to make sure that, that, that piece is as transparent as possible.
Thank you. Other questions from the commission?
Russ, tell me about the scrim.
Okay. So the, the, the idea first started there, it's done. Oh shoot, I can't remember where now. It, it's done in another place here in Ohio that is currently escaping me.
Crocker Park?
Crocker Park, thank you. And, and so they, they talked about this as this sort of paintable material. It got me thinking about if you're standing in that space and you're looking to the east. What you see right now is just the side of a hill and trees. And while it's, it's not particularly well kept, it's, it's, it's a nice little green escape from an otherwise urban oasis. And it sort of got us thinking about what if you could abstract that in a way that brought that nature into the space? That was what I talked to David Keon about. Now, I don't, I, I don't want personally any myself or, or any one person within our, our design consultant group to say this is what it has to be. I think that's what makes those sorts of opportunities special. It can be whatever it wants to be. It's a, it is a metal scrim, it is, it is translucent, I guess you could say. So it's, it's got, you know, holes poked through it so that air moves through it. But at the end of the day, whatever color, whatever design, whatever, whatever we decide it to look like, it, it, it can be whatever we want.
And really the hope there was to let, to elevate this beyond what we've seen before, which is, you know, either and you can use this in any way you want to, you can make it a commercial application, you can make it whatever you, whatever you want. By making it a, really a canvas for public art and, and handing the keys to David and saying, make this a beautiful public art enclosure and, and a, a fun found space within Bridge Park. We thought this could be a really neat way to elevate this particular open space. And to meet your request for creating something new and different at Bridge Park that we haven't already done before. So an accommodation of a flat open space, which we don't really have yet, and you know, a, a great, a truly public art canvas. And we can, we can let the Dublin Arts Council take a run with.
Mark, can you follow up?
No, I, I, I mean, don't get me wrong, I, I advocated multiple times and I very, very much appreciate the fact that, you know, we recognize that this, this garage, these side panels of this garage are a grand opportunity. They're, they're, you know, a big, a big canvas for something. Obviously, none of us exactly know how that comes to fruition. I appreciate that you are finding a method and a way forward to, to getting there. You know, it starts to beg the questions and I'm saying this amongst, you know, the, sort of the designers on the call. Are we, are we binding, are we binding it at this point to just a flat, right? A flat facade or is there still potentially, if we're putting it in the hands of the Art, Art Commission? Are we also giving a little bit of license to think through? Not just, not just what the imagery is, not just the rastred image that goes on it, but do the panels, are there, are there three panels down? Are they, you know, do they have some dimension and relief to them? Do they not? I, I'm not advocating one way or another, but like, you know, how does, how do, how do the parameters get set? Or what license is granted from this point forward? And I, I agree with you, it could be, it could be remarkable and special. I think as we're all sort of on this commission and/or designers at heart, three dimensionality always, always helps. So it's like, that's kind of the next step now that, you know, we might have found a sort of way forward on how to do something remarkable and what is, what does that mean? Does it integrate lights? You know, again, three panels, does it integrate lights? I'm not advocating for any of this, I'm just, you know, poking around on the internet myself and finding like, there's a Rice University building that kind of does some of that. And it starts to dance a little bit more than just being kind of the proverbial sort of construction scrim they put over, over big towers, the big buildings in Italy when they're, when they're working on them, right? Like, it could be more than just an image. So kudos, it's going in the right direction. I, I don't know, I don't know what it will mean by the end of it, but it's, it's lovely and wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Mr. Wayne?
I just want to add on to that whole discussion and I, I think I'm starting to perhaps see an idea coming out of this. Is that the, the pop of color ties into the scrim? And I guess it would advocate that is there a kind of this, this color theme that comes through that whole courtyard? And it doesn't have to be the green, but maybe the furniture reflects it, maybe, I don't know, the lighting that, that we, because again, a lot of the other architecture is, is pretty, you know, palm colors. So maybe this is the place to really pop something out, not just at the, that entrance, but bring it all the way through the courtyard.
I love that idea.
I do too.
So I have another, if I could keep going, I just had another thing that caught my attention. And that's the, the Dale Street, Dale Drive facade of the parking garage. Which, you know, I think, you know, the architects have been, done a great job of making it not look like a parking garage. And, you know, kudos for that. But the, the one thing that caught my attention is the length of the parapet without a break in it. And that's something that is, it's kind of foreign in this whole area because you've done such a great job of varying roof lines and all that. And the, the question is whether you could do something to take the center portion of that facade and just pop it up. So you break that parapet line and start, it then starts to break down into like three components as opposed to one bigger, flat kind of composition.
I think that, that could be possible. I, I, I think we mentioned earlier about it sort of being inspired from warehouse architecture. But that's not to say that warehouse architecture can't have, you know, some sort of parapet flourish in the middle, right? So yeah, I mean, it's absolutely possible.
I think one of the, if you want a screen share, maybe Russ, that, that view again, we can probably take a quick look at it. But, you know, if you, and see that we don't have the before and after that previously, you know, we just had an open parking garage there. Really heard that you wanted to try to make the garage look better. And, you know, it's really been elevated at this point to a level we haven't seen yet at Bridge Park. We're trying to make something really of the, of that ground plane and let that be, you know, if you think about the garage as a warehouse canvas behind it, as a rectangular canvas, really adding a flash down there at that ground floor with, over it with the operable doors. And the, you know, letting that, the counterpoint to the, the horizontal flat parapet up there really being what's going on at the ground plane as, as gray is moving. But I think it's something that we could definitely take a look at.
It really, it really shows up in the rendering that, at one angle. And again, I, I applaud you guys for like making a parking garage not look like a parking garage. Or garagi, whatever, the right terms. But I just, you know, I think the code has something about breaking roof lines every so often. And I think this one might be an area where it just might make sense to do that. That, yeah, that was the view that was coming up.
Yeah, and as I, as I'm looking at them, I, you know, I think this facade, the Dale Drive facade probably wouldn't benefit from that because of the asymmet- asymmetry of the, the liner. But I, the Mooney Street facade, I think perhaps could.
Yeah, I'm less concerned about the Mooney Street facade, because that's, you know, you can't get back from it and see the whole composition. Whereas on Dale Drive, you can, right? You've got a lot of space around this area. And so you can really, you really kind of see that, that long straight.
It's really just a matter of, of knocking the parapet up above the black portion down below, so that you have a, a step up by, by, by a bit to reflect or mirror what's going on down below. Is that what you're, you're thinking?
Again, I'm not trying to design it for you, I'm just saying that caught my attention. And it just seems to be a long run of, of facade without any kind of break in the parapet, right? That's, that's the thing.
I think Nelson, I think it's as simple as if you, do we have a render of the other side? Yeah, here we go. I mean, I think it's as simple as taking the, the, the two. You know, if you, if you break it down into threes, right, you've got three, the, the two primary piers in the middle. They, they don't have to pop out anymore, they just, you just use the brick and there's a detail in it, then, and then the parapet just pops up. To just create that break. I, I don't, I don't, I mean, that should be relatively simple to do.
And the, the flatness, it is, for better or for worse, it is a look. I mean, I think if you go with the nineteen nineteen building up the street, the, that, that has a very similar look and I'm probably stepping in it, it probably does, probably does have a parapet step somewhere, but I, you know, it has a, it is an aesthetic in and of itself, even with, with more of a, I don't know, kind of a cool utilitarian aesthetic in some cases. In this case, it is a parking garage. I, I'm, I'm pretty excited that you guys suggested this kind of a look here and we're able to kind of implement it here. I think it's super appropriate, but there's a, definitely an art, art to getting it right.
Right, and I'm just giving some comments right now, I'm not, I'm asking you to think about it. Could we also go to the corner of Taller Ridge and Mooney to the residential building? While I'm on a roll here, I might as well keep going. Another thing that just caught my eye, and again, maybe there's a really good explanation for it. The, the brick panel that's on the corner piece that comes out there looks very foreign to that whole corner piece. It's like, is that there for a, some kind of a structural reason or that one little brick panel that slides out from the other brick just seems out of place? It seems like if you push that back, you'd have that corner piece would all read as one architectural element. Any feedback?
Yeah, this is Matt, Matt Lidle, I'm the architect for the residential building. As, as grade is going up along Taller Ridge, so we needed to have some sort of masonry material. So grade actually raises above the floor line, so we, we kind of wanted to express that. And, you know, have a, have that wall have a grounding element and using the masonry to do that. I suppose, you know, it, it wouldn't necessarily have to be as high as it is, where it's taken up to the bottom of the transom. We could probably lower that so that it could be at the bottom of the, of the larger pane of glass and just replicate that large metal pane of glass below those transits that you see right there. That would, that would diminish the, the look that I think you're, you're talking about.
Yeah, again, just an observation and just was looking for a discussion of why.
That, I'd be all for that too. I'm guessing Russell.
Additionally, we kind of wanted to. Yeah, and on, on the flip side, you know, we kind of wanted to provide some privacy to that unit rather than have, you know, pedestrians be able to have a straight shot in to look inside of a unit, so.
And while we're on that corner, it, it does, as you wrap around the corner, if we're lowering that, that brick on what appears currently on the left side of the screen at the corner, symmetry around the corner, but also I would not be opposed to, I'm one of the OCD people and it would just kind of make me start to twitch a little bit.
Okay. Yeah, I think a lot of that is kind of being hidden by, you know, the landscaping that we're showing along the, the foundation there as well.
Never rely on landscape to hide buildings.
Ms. Fox?
Yeah, I, I have a question about some of the doorways, the, the individual doorways on the residential unit. It, it, it was mentioned by staff that stoops were not, you didn't have room for them. So what's the possibility? And, and I couldn't tell because these are a little bit smaller than actual size. So I couldn't tell how many of these individual doorways face the sidewalk. But it looks like there's at least six to ten of them, maybe? Is there any way to elevate the appearance of those doorways so they don't just blend in? Because if you can't get the stoop and you can't get a little porch, what can we get? I mean, to, to kind of give a, an interest to the entrance ways of those condos?
For the units that are along Mooney Street, because that level does not have direct access to the elevator, we need to provide an accessible means of entrance to each of those units. So that is why you don't see an actual step or stoop leading up into those units. Now, the, the units along Dale Drive, since they do have corridor access, they have access to the elevator that we're sharing with the garage at the eastern half of the building. So that, that's, that's the main reason why the stoops are, are kind of missing. I imagine we could probably embellish them with, again, with some landscaping to kind of provide the, the look and feel of a stoop. Whereas, but it would still function in a way that allow someone in a wheelchair to access those at-grade units.
It's, it's probably, I mean, for me, the stoop is not the, the necessary element. But it is that the entrance to the, to the building becomes a little focal point. And especially if you have to be ADA accessible, I, I could understand why you wouldn't necessarily have a stoop. But a portico, a some sense that, I mean, that's one of the things that I think makes the facade at the street level for entrance ways have an interest that is That as you, it it does, so it doesn't become our door doesn't become another window. Do you know what I'm saying? It has. So for me, I think that's an important element. These entrances. Have to stand out. They have to look a little different. They don't have, each one doesn't have to be different, but I think they have to be different from. The flat facade of a of a window frame.
Certainly, I could I could definitely see them having, you know, a a covered element with the columns on either side. As long as you can, you know, obviously keep that out of the right away. So but yeah, I I think that's a that's a very valid comment. Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Can I make a suggestion to follow up on what Mark said about we're going to dress a little bit back to the to the wall that you've turned over to David? To try to make it not only beautiful but unusual. In 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 many towns, especially in Europe, there's always a wall. It it's somewhere where they where Mary says to John, come here, I've got to show you this wall, you know, kind of a reason for going there. And and it's it's Mark talked about dimensional and not just a not just a. A post painting on the wall, but something that 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 people say haven't seen. Anywhere else that 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 would draw people to that area and and it's really fun when you have something like that. You've really got a great canvas for that. And and David has a lot of imagination. If you could suggest that something unusual. Beautiful, but something that people would say, Mary, come see this. You got to see this. This is really cool, you know.
I'll I'll take it a bit further, Warren. I'm gonna, they're gonna love this one. Russ Russell love this one. How about how about even considering things like, and this is where we don't need to get into it, but I'm just trying to make sure we we're pushing it and just not making it a flat canvas. But hydrochromic inks. That when they get wet, they become something different or or thermochromic inks or. Even how does it come off the wall and integrate with the lights? Um, there's like. Sea grass lights that are really vertical, almost like fiber optic. But, you know, like PVC and kind of just wander, right? And is there, I I don't know, is it, again, to the point of how much? License are we granting to consider it? Does it? I think I I think Mr. Way was spot on with, does it come out into the space, right? What elements integrate with it? Is it not? Is it more than just a flat flat thing? I think you guys are, again. This is this is becoming a larger undertaking, but it could be an incredible kind of public art art thing. If if we see our opportunity to really embrace it appropriately, so.
I agree, that's I'm I'm sorry, I I apologize, but for example, I can't remember what country it was, but there's a gum wall that my wife and I went to see. In 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 some, maybe it was in Italy where the hotel said, you've got to go see the gum wall. And all it was was fifty years of people putting gum on this wall, all different colors and so on, but it was. I would never suggest that. I would never say something dumb, but but when we went there, there were crowds of people saying, hey, you got to go see this. You got to go see this. So. So that would really be exciting if we could if we could get David and and you guys to be really creative like that. And what Mark just lit my fire when he said, you know, something not, I don't want to see just a mural there or, you know, something a graffiti on the wall, but something. That would really be would catch people's attention and want to drag other people there to see it. I think that.
Brad tells that that scrim provides us with a with a blank canvas, literally, right? And at at this point, we have. Designed and and budgeted the ability to hide the garage behind it with this cool thing. We've got a, I love all the ideas that we're talking about, except for maybe the gum wall. Sorry, Warren.
No gum. But but.
Of having David do something that that's three dimensional. I mean, you start getting into public art like that. That's also something that there is a separate. Budget for, you know, the the double arts council has a public arts budget that could be applied to this, but. We've got we've got the basis covered with covering up what would otherwise be, you know, being able to see cars and stuff behind there. And putting a finish on that, whatever that ends up being, but that that literally is a a starting point that can be built up off of. With whatever we would want want to. And the fun part is, I guess, we don't have to. Have all of us on this call today designed it throughout a bunch of ideas as we are doing and and then have probably it's a separate focus group with David. Say, these are some of the things we'd like to see and and let, and this is what the Arts Council is for and what they do, and they do a really good job at.
And you're you're spot on, Nelson, and rest assured, we recognize we are. We're not here to spend. Just spend money unnecessarily, right? And there are ways ways to get there. I guess there's a certain amount of, and maybe all maybe if all we're doing is seed planting. To your point, you've budgeted a scrim, you've budgeted furniture, you've budgeted lights. At what point does, you know, does all of that start to, did that constellation of things start to potentially be in the mix? On on this without spending any more more substantial dollars type of thing? I I think there's. Before too many decisions get too far down the line, I I think you have that conversation sooner as opposed to later. Rest assured, we recognize it. Rebecca, we are, we are kind of headlong into comments here.
We are, and I'd like to kind of steer us back to our lane, since we have a fantastic arts council who does their job very, very well. So I'd like to steer us back to planning and looking at this application. So just to start us off, I I want to level set here. We have a few items that we're we're working at together. And I I know as a planning and zoning commission, we're always very sensitive to the word waiver or exception or whatever. So I I went for the biggest bang for my buck and looked for the thirty waivers. And I just went through and did kind of the the reason for the waiver and grabbed some numbers to level set across the commission. And there are technically, according to the staff report, thirty waivers. There are two administrative departments, departures, sorry. And twenty eight waivers. And so then I bucketed those waivers. Nine of them are called out as being consistent with the rest of Bridge Park. Fourteen of them are this application only, and they call out specifically. Staff calls out specifically, quite a few of them are due to the nature of the grading difference. So because of the very particular nature of these parcels. Some things had to be different. And then we have two items that are consistent with the intent of code. And then three items. And there's one that could be classified as both this application and this last bucket, which are departures due to the interior nature. Of the element. So whether that's, you know, three sides. Apply the rule perfectly, but the fourth side, because it's interior to the block or because it's interior to the project. So I just wanted to start with the numbers because I know that the rest of the commission looks at, you know, does it meet code? Does it meet code? And that's a lot of our job, but I do want to level set on that. So understanding where we are and the 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 three items that we're looking at now for the conditional use, the final development plan and the final plat. Looking to discussions. So Mark, do you want to start us off?
I I'm going to say this, generally, this is a really good package. You guys are, you guys obviously know that the the block left to right, top to bottom, front to back. It's been a labor of love. It's it's readily apparent. Lot of good improvement each each and every time. You guys listen to us, we we entirely appreciate that. Obviously, it's a very collaborative relationship we all have. I'll also add generally, and I know I know there's, there are times in the process, right? The entire design process where drawings are not. You you don't take drawings as far as you can. And I'm generally circling back to you, and I know there's you're chock full of renderings at this point that are really, really rich with. City life and animation and and greenery and those types of things. On a on a project this size, that obviously really, really helps this commission sort of. Live and breathe this that this sort of project. The elevations at the same time, just to to comment on on that, I I appreciate that there is shadowing because there is quite a bit of undulation. Across the board and the shadowing helps to helps to provide some of that. So generally, kudos on the on the presentation. I I in large part am fond, I'm fond of this across the board. I don't have a a great deal of hangups. Anywhere. I really appreciate you creating the open space and the sensitivity to those things. I I I do, Russ, I'll be honest, I'm a little disappointed. I so wanted that slight little twist. You you guys never never got there. It was still would be lovely, but but so be it. I'm I'm also a little disappointed on. It's a very attractive building. The massing is good. The stepping in the in the parapets is is really well done on on specifically the north side. There was at some point, right, like a canted, a cant on the. What is it? Southwest corner, right? The little, the really cute cute. And I guess it's a pseudo pseudo wood cant, right? On the porches, there was sort of an angle, some angular stuff to it. Again, personal preference. I I I sort of missed that, but it's still really attractive building across the board. I I really don't have much bad to say about it. I'm excited about the art, however that shakes out. Excited about all the small tweaks that you guys will continue to make on it and. You know, is there is there an ivy wall that climbs up and certain choice locations on those apartments on the on the north side, things like that? You'll you'll find ample opportunities for all of it. Kudos.
Thank you, Mark. Jane, do you want to go next?
Hey, um, let's see, I'm not seeing anybody. Let me see if I can. Yeah, my screen is blank.
Sorry, Jane, 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 one more thing.
Sure.
Building lighting. Up uplights, this 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 building is is just waiting for it. I I know you guys, it's on your on your radar, but keep it in mind.
Okay.
Sorry, Jane.
No, no problem. I'm just trying to get my screen to work right. It's not working right. Maybe I can figure it out. Okay, so a couple of things. One, I I want to compliment you on the redesign. I'm I'm much, I'm much happier with the way it looks, and I I like the fact that you were able to bring down the level of the parking garage. My suggestion, as as Kim Way was saying about the parapet. I worried about the screen, the mechanical screening from the residential, I think it's a residential building that's on Mooney Street across. And but remind me, Russ, I don't remember. Is it residential on the other side of Mooney Street?
Yeah, it's the it's the liner of the C block garage.
It is? So I so I guess what I'm asking is. From the ground floor, you can screen the mechanical fine, but what about residential units around the building? If they were on the upper level, would the mechanicals be screened then? Because you don't want to have an upper level apartment building or a condo and then looking down on somebody's air conditioning. So I guess that was a concern about the mechanical screening, and it's hard for me to see that perspective.
Yeah, and I what I can tell you is that I know that both Nikki and a lot of our our design consultants looked at the screening. Very heavily, you know, I would I would have to rely on on them to to. Give you specifics, but I know that that was studied quite a bit.
Okay, as long as I can't see it from, yeah, from like an upper level on adjacent building, especially since. We're doing noncompatible building residential across from certain things. That's one of those things you want to think about. I'm gonna, a a couple of things, let's see, the lot coverage. On number three here, it says that your block G. Goes over lot coverage, not to exceed eighty percent. For corridor and parking and not to exceed seventy five percent. For apartment building, but the combined lot coverage for block G is ninety percent? Is that is that accurate?
I mean, that was. I think James Peltier can probably speak up to this if he's still awake. James, are you are you alive?
Yep, still here.
Okay, so do we have ninety percent lot coverage and why?
So when we look at the the overall. Project as a whole, we're at eighty two percent. So we're very close to that eighty percent. Percentage and we we worked and. Really fought to get as much green space on here as we could to get that down as as far as we could. But with the challenges with the urban developments. Like this, you know, we it is always a challenge, but we did work really hard to get that down.
I guess what James is saying is that the I think the way that it's it's presented there is just looking at. Within G block, but not looking at that the contiguous. Dog park that we also added to to the project. It's land that we are contributing to the project to be able to try to do many things. One is to meet the open space requirements as you guys requested. The other one was really to work towards this impervious requirement. And as you look historically over the rest of Bridge Park, we we tend to be over ninety percent because we haven't stepped up to provide the additional green space around the buildings that you're seeing in all the renderings that are. They really changed the dynamic between the building and the street. The other component that we layered in was the was the dog park. Which, when you look at what we're developing in total, James is, we're at eighty two percent total, not ninety percent. So we're really very close to. To where the the code wants us to be and much, much closer, honestly, than we are in any of the other blocks that we've developed already at Bridge Park. As we've gone towards a continuous improvement, for those who've been to business school, we continue to always look for ways to get better. And this is another one where where we're really trying to get there.
Now, and I, you know, I I really appreciate the fact that you're moving in that direction. I personally would like to see you adhere. To that closer to the seventy five and eighty percent and and because of the fact that. I believe that what you're doing, what you're showing now with. Some of these spaces that that give you a sense of movement on the street with some more landscaping. Makes makes it a more timeless development because it's more interesting as you walk down the street. So. And so I wonder how you're going to get sidewalk greater than five foot unless you reduce your lot coverage. Because they're asking you to give them six foot. So how are you going to do that unless you skinny up your building?
And that so that five foot is along Dale. Or the the five foot sidewalk and widening that up to six. So our lot coverage, and that's on the right way. So our lot coverage does not take into account. That sidewalk in the right of way, it's a separate item.
So in other words, you'll be able to get six foot. But you're going to lose some landscaping area.
Yes, but that would be in the right of way, correct? So it would not impact our our lot coverage for the the development.
Well, like I said, my preference would be to see you stay, you know, as close to what. As we're finding, everybody wants outdoor dining. I'm really disappointed when it comes to that corner piece on the corner of Mooney and Bridge. Because it's a decent sized square footage of about. I think thirteen hundred and eighty two square foot. Your previous preliminary panel showed sixteen hundred and seventy eight square foot, and even though you backed it up. It's going to end up being come private space and then all we're going to get is just linear. Linear benches around the perimeter of the of the of the block, other than the great little. Mid pedestrian way. So. I'm I'm just encouraging you to. Figure out a way that we get more bulk space on these corners than just little tiny seating, but. I wanted to also ask you about the blank wall on. I think it's on Mooney Street. I'm not sure, maybe it's. The blank wall limitations that are on. I think it's on Mooney. I'm not sure. Is anybody, can you show me that, Nikki? Where the blank wall limitation waiver was?
Yeah, so I believe. That is the connector between building G one and G two. There is a stretch greater than fifteen feet. And so that is waiver number eight. A request to permit a seventeen foot length. Of blank wall.
Is that on the is the garage, it's the garage or no?
So it's the connector piece. So it's the connector that connects the garage to the office building. I can pull up an image.
I just want to see it. Oh, I I see it. Okay. Okay. And that, and that is because of the grade change? Is that the reason we've got a blank wall there?
My understanding is that it's due to the interior functionality of the space. And I believe the elevator shaft, I would have to defer to the designer.
Yeah, it looks like-
Yeah, that's, it, so one of the, the way that we were able to skinny up that connector was a redesign that put the elevators against that wall. So that section, the elevators are right behind there. And so we're using the, the teak material. Where you see that teak material, that's where the elevators.
Okay, and that's the blank wall piece that you're asking for a waiver? Because I really like the fact that you put that warm material in there. I guess I was thinking it was the west elevation on the McCallum Garage that was, that was the blank wall. Maybe not, maybe, maybe you met it. There's so much to this here. It's very confusing, you know? But I actually really like that.
Yeah, and so Jane, you're correct that there is a second blank wall limitation. It's waiver number nine, 19.
Oh, okay.
And it is, let's see, it is the garage, I believe.
Yeah, but that's the one that calls out the scrim.
Yeah.
That's just the, that's the interior wall with the scrimmaging. Yeah, I'm not worried about that one. Okay. My biggest concern is that, is the doorway entrances. And I do feel as if this really needs to be addressed. Anything on a street level that has a doorway to the apartment building or into the apartment, into the residential building, I really think needs to be enhanced. I think it's really important. And then, and then when it comes to the open spaces, I worry that we're, I like the water feature and I think, I compliment you on that. But I still feel as if the open spaces on the block still kind of just are benches that wrap around sort of the corners and aren't as, quite as innovative and as usual and as place making as I would still hope for. So I'm going to push you even harder. And I'm going to ask Nicole if she'll just put up a couple of, since you gave us aspirational images, I'm, I'm going to give you a few. And I just want you to think about these as, as you look at these open spaces because I think we can do a little bit more fun on the open spaces. Nikki, do you mind?
I do not at all. I'm ready to go.
Okay. Okay, so- All right. So I think you're, you're starting to get there on the mid pedestrian way. And who knows, maybe that scrimshaw will look like a waterfall with the right kind of paint. You can go to the next one, Nikki. This is the kind of stuff I want to see happening on these restaurants and on, on the street level because we need to break up the flat, one-dimensional massing that we see as we walk down the street. And I'd really, when I said that, you know, if we could get planters or whatever, we can do a whole lot with making that street a lot more interesting. Next one. The fountain was a great idea. It'd be nice if we can incorporate water flowing. If we're going to use a linear open space, let's see if we can make it so that it just really flows down the street or you really get a sense that this is a place you want to linger. These are just entrances. And then the other thing is the evenings, the mid pedestrian way in the evening. Can you go back one real quick, Nikki? On the right-hand side with the lighting, when you do the lighting on these mid pedestrian ways, as, for me, as a woman walking in, down between those buildings, it's, it's kind of scary to go to a place that's not lit well or is hidden from view from the street. So I'd really like you to think about incorporating some interesting lighting in the evenings. Next one. And this is just us another opportunity where, you know, suggestions on outdoor dining, abilities to create an outdoor space that maybe, certainly this is a dining area, but it certainly could be incorporated into an outdoor open park space as well, just with a pergola effect or planters surrounding it. I don't know if there's any more, Nikki, are there?
No.
That's it. I'm just throwing out ideas because I think that we just need to find some really, as you have done with this, with the scrimshaw. That's the kind of thing that we're looking for, to try to really kick it up a bit. So other than that, I think that your design is, is very well done.
One thing, just to help you feel really good about this, Jane. I look back at the, the impervious space that we had in the other blocks because I know that's something that you've had some concern with. And in block C, we were between 97 and 98% impervious versus 82% now on block G. And block B, we were at 98%. So you talk about how, how much better have we gotten compared to what you see when you walk block B and block C? It's, we're going from 98% down to 82. So it's, you'll feel that, I guess is all I'm saying. You feel good about where we're at now.
I, I do. And I really feel good about, you know, the water features. I think these are the kinds of things that are really going to make the development timeless. And I'd really like to see you work it hard. So it's not just a table and chairs that becomes the outdoor space or a bench. Let's just get more creative in, in what that outdoor seating looks like when, when you go to gather because the chairs and all that gets weathered, tired and, you know. Well, you can tell by the aspirational images what I'm talking about. Okay, thanks, you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Mr. Schneer.
I generally think the project's great. And I applaud the applicant for taking the comments to heart and making some, I believe, significant changes. You know, we're, we're always faced with, you know, is it, is it the camel or the elephant that was designed by a committee? So I, we're lucky to take shots at anything in particular. I, I think Jane's comment, I mean, those pictures are aspirational, inspirational, all the above. But I also would give credit to your team. I, you know, I think you hear us and I, you guys have demonstrated your expertise in this. You know how much further we'd like to push you. And we just want to push you as far as we can within the bounds of our authority and, and, and the law. So I think it's great. Congratulations.
Thank you, Lance. Mr. Grimes.
Well, it's a beautiful project. I love the diversity all the way around the building, whether you say it's learning from past experience or continuous improvement. I, I think this G block ought to be called your gem block amongst the jewels that have been developing along in this part of Dublin. And I think the example you guys are setting is, is, is mountaintop, quite frankly. And I, I appreciate the way you take the constructive criticism. And from my peers, I think that, you know, we're talking about high degrees of excellence here. And I appreciate all their comments. I mean, I don't, I, I can't tell you enough how, you know, between Jane and everyone, what the, we want to push it if we can. And we want you to know that we appreciate what you're doing, what you have done and what you will do. I like the way you've managed this building on the changes of elevations and, and the diversity within and throughout. I don't think there's really going to be a bad side to this. And I, I love it. I love it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Mr. Fishman.
I think it's all pretty much been said. And, and I agree with all my colleagues. I, I think Mark said it was a labor of love. And I, I love the fact that you've evolved and, and, and gotten better and better. And, and I appreciate the fact that you, you've listened to us. And, and I think it's going to be a wonderful product. I think Leo, his gem might stick, you know, that, the G for gem. And I, I think that I, I'm, I know you're going to listen to us today. And I, we really want to make that, make the best out of that, that, every green area we have. And I appreciate that, that, I think Jane's inspirational pictures, I hope gave you some suggestions. And, and I'm really happy. I, I, nothing's perfect, but I think that you've, you, as Mark said, it's a labor of love. And I think you've worked toward perfection. And I, we, I really appreciate that personally.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Mr. Way.
Yeah, so I apologize for all my questions. This is my first round on the commission and the first time I've seen this project. So, you know, I had a lot of thinking about it and thoughts to share with you. I have, I think it's a great project. I think the office building is stunning. I think you've done a fabulous job on it, the, the way that you treated the parking garages. You know, not many folks would do that, go to that level. And so that's a kudos to you also. And obviously the residential building is top-notch. I have three, three points that I just want to conclude with. One is, I think staff in the comments mentioned that there's a concern about plants in the courtyard because of it being in the shade. It's, you know, because of its orientation, it's going to be heavily shaded all year round. And so this whole idea of can you use art then? Not relying on plant material, but can you use art and, and other things to really enliven that space? So I would encourage you to continue to, to, to work towards that. I love, I love fountains. I love fountains when they work. So we didn't have any discussion about the fountain. What happens, does it get shut down in the winter? What does it look like in the winter? Do you fill it up with Christmas trees? I would encourage you to think of the water feature maybe as about water moving over something. And so when you turn it off, you still have something there to look at that could be really attractive and usable and nice. And again, we didn't have a discussion about the fountain. So I don't know that the intimate details of it. But my concern is what does it look like when it's not running? As any fountain that you see anywhere, it's, that's a constant problem. And then that corner is the southwest corner of that block. And it is going to get a lot of sun, a lot of heat, especially in the summer. So shade should be really important. And I don't, you know, maybe you're thinking of mechanical shade, you know, umbrellas and stuff like that. But that, that's a, that's a corner that is, you're either going to love it or you're going to hate it, depending on the time of year. So just, just that's, those are my comments. And again, I think it's a great project. And the guys have, have really put a lot of effort into this and come to a great kind of outcome. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Way. And then I'll just touch on a couple of other items. I know that we've talked through this application before and my fellow commissioners talked about how you put, you know, the next level of effort in from the last time we saw it. I just want to highlight a couple of things, little things like bike racks. You know, the bike racks with the 83 spaces. And that was, you know, no problem, came back in. The open space we've talked about significantly this evening. I, I still struggle a little bit with the six to one versus the three to one kind of relative spacing. I, I still struggle. I like my open space. I'm, that's personal preference, so I'll leave it there. But the application, you look at those buildings and they fit, they fit in Bridge Park. You know, they have differentiation in architecture, but they work together. You look at some of the hotels that are those anchor spots and, and we're not deviating from that high level, that high standard that we've established in Bridge Park. So I just offer a pat on the back for taking our somewhat discombobulated feedback as you're dealing with many people with many perspectives and bring it to something that is as cohesive in design, yet has the variety and meets the, the vision that we have for Bridge Park being a unique and a destination. So just a thank you from, from me personally and from this commission, I think you've heard this evening. That being said, commission members, we have a few items here that we are looking at with this application. We have item 120-199 CU for the conditional use. And we'll do these just in sequence. So Nikki, could I have you present?
Yes, one moment, please.
So the first item is the conditional use. There are no conditions on this item, so I am looking for a motion of approval.
So moved.
Thank you.
Ms. Fox. I'm sorry, could you hear me?
I said yes.
Okay, sorry. Ms. Call.
Yes.
Mr. Fishman.
Yes.
Mr. Supalack.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Mr. Way.
Yes.
Mr. Schneer.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. Now we have administrative departures. There are two of these items this evening. And I am looking for an approval.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Mr. Grimes, a second.
Mr. Supalack.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. Call.
Yes.
Mr. Fishman.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Way.
Yes.
Mr. Schneer.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. The next item is a motion to approve the waivers. And I never thought I'd be okay saying this number, but the motion to approve 30 waivers.
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Can I, do we have the opportunity to add a condition? Because I think we had an agreement on a condition of doing a little enhancement on the entrance ways to the residential units.
I do think that would be covered in the final development plan, motion five.
Okay, we have got one.
Yeah, I have some drafted up, so when we get there, we can-
Okay, great. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Going back to waivers, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Beal.
Mr. Schneer.
Yes.
Mr. Way.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Fishman.
Yes.
Ms. Call.
Yes.
Mr. Supalack.
Yes.
Next, I am looking for a motion to approve a parking plan.
So moved.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes.
Mr. Fishman.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Call.
Yes.
Mr. Supalack.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Mr. Schneer.
Yes.
Mr. Way.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. Now we're going to pause from voting at this time. Nikki, if you could present the 11 conditions for the final development plan and any others that you've added through the course of the meeting.
Okay, so the first six conditions remain unchanged. And then, so we can go through those really quickly. So these are, as shown on the screen, we'll need window specifications for building G1, which is the office building. We will need installation details for the Juliet balconies on the residential building. We need site furnishing details, as well as, you know, any associated planters, subject to staff approval. We also need final locations on the bicycle parking and bicycle racks. The opportunity to work with staff to determine whether or not any additional security measures need to be taken with the parking garage, just to make sure we have latitude there. That they work with us to provide the necessary loading spaces. And this is just a code requirement. Seven through 11 also remain unchanged, which is they work with us to screen the ground-mounted mechanical equipment. They provide a revised site lighting. They provide a revised site lighting photometric plan to eliminate any hotspots where there may be higher light levels and disparities across the site lighting plan. They provide that six feet of sidewalk along Dale Drive. They execute the public access easement for the dog park. And they work with staff to revise the landscape plans as provided in the staff report. The conditions that we have drafted based on this discussion are that the applicant extend the scrim screen through the lower level Mooney Street Plaza. The applicant revise the G3, which is the residential entries along Dale Drive and Mooney Street to provide stoop details in accordance with the commission's discussion, subject to staff approval. Building G2's parapet, which is the parking structure along Dale Drive, be broken up in accordance with the commission's discussion, subject to staff approval. The applicant submit a comprehensive open space lighting package, subject to staff approval. And that the brick foundation cladding at the northwest corner of the residential building be reduced, subject to staff approval. And then, I guess, just want to check in on all of those and and ask the question if there were any other conditions that we may have missed.
So Nikki, could I? I I I'm going to ask the applicant here in just a second if these conditions are acceptable. But on that last one, could we change the wording to instead of to be revised, to be to reduce? Just to be revised, because I think that we had pretty clear direction here, but I don't want to handcuff that. You know, if there's some shifting and it's an equal trade, but now it meets the intent of what we were talking about, that he then have to come back.
Yeah, I agree.
And Ms. Fox, did you have another? You're muted, Jane.
Nikki, if you could just put those back up real quick on the on the stoop. I think the the wording, it's not, they weren't able to do a stoop. So our code states that that the that can be satisfied through the use of architectural features, including entranceway roofs, side light windows, transom windows or other adjacent windows, additional moldings with expression lines. There's a variety of things that they could, that they should be able to apply that does not mean that they have to do a stoop. So it's in accordance with one five three oh six two I on entrance design.
One more time, Jane, one fifty-three oh six five.
Oh, six, two, I, three, A. And that gives them the leniency to be able to do something a little unusual. And then on the parapet, I think, Kim, in in looking at the parapet, and I would ask him this. Would a relief of brick, like you see sometimes at the top of a warehouse building, where they actually have sometimes even a brick name of a building? The Wonder Bread Bakery, I think, had this on their warehouse. And I and I I think they actually had it in in brick. And that was a relief that created a break in that that long line across the parapet. Would that be something that would be acceptable to the commission and give a different look? Instead of just popping up a parapet, you know, breaking up the parapet length with height or whatever. I'm just wondering if we can give them a little leeway.
I I wonder if we have leeway. It it essentially says it ought to be broken up in accordance with the discussion and subject to staff's approval. So staff, if you're comfortable having insight into our discussion this evening and our previous discussions for what the goal is, what the intent is for relieving that long stretch. If you're comfortable, I I believe that I'm comfortable and then I look to the rest of the commission.
Yeah, definitely. And I think, right, the fact that we have these recorded records now, if we do need to go back and refer to some of that discussion, both on a staff level and the applicant side, we can make sure we're meeting your expectations.
And and then the last one was the comment that Kim made about the fountain. I I do think that's worth consideration. We don't want it to be just a usable, pretty feature that's only going to be operating four or five months of the year. Or, well, maybe more six, six or seven. I think that needs to be, the fountain feature, we like it, but I I think it probably could use some sort of a condition that that it's a, it has year-round attraction.
That's a good idea. Good job, Jane.
Now, Nikki, is the code anywhere that that governs what features that are not in use have to be kept up to a certain standard? I imagine that we don't, that we don't have, you know, gross code to to manage every particular. But it may be something we want to consider, especially as many water features as we have, whether they're public or private, to make sure that the next generation, the next iteration of these items going in are visually attractive in all four seasons. Now, while Nikki is typing those up, and and we're not going to hold you to every word just right now because she's not presenting them, but looking to you, Mr. Hunter and Mr. Yoder on the acceptability of of these additional conditions. Are there any that you would seek additional clarity on? Or are there any that you would like to discuss?
Hey, Russ, what I'll jump in on is the applicant extending the scrim through to the lower level Mooney Street Plaza. I think what we were anticipated there was glimpses of it through to the lower level Mooney Street Plaza, but not a not a dragging of the canvas all the way down. I I think our, one of the things our design team really liked is getting a hint, but also having a path to discovery and a reason for arriving at that destination, a reason to go to that space. So that that language, I think, is something I'd like to try to clarify a little bit, if you can.
Wasn't that related to extending the design elements through the courtyard? Not necessarily the scrim itself, but the color and, you know, that palette.
Yeah, that's what Kim talked about, is tying the a color scheme, a unifying element that that connected really Mooney to Dale and through the open space. So that that could be a better description. I I guess that's, however we want to word this, I know Nikki got a challenge to how to start her discussion. I think as you said, discussion is there recorded, so that that will help, I think, too.
Yeah, I think she has it covered there. The applicant extend design elements of the scrim screen.
Yeah, other than that, I I I have nothing, I have no issues with any of these.
All right, looking back to you, any final modifications? All right, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the final development plan with our final candidacy is seventeen conditions.
So move.
Thank you, Ms. Beal.
Mr. Way.
Yes.
Mr. Snare.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Fishman.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. Call.
Yes.
Mr. Supalak.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. And finally, I'm looking for a motion to recommend approval to city council for a final plan with a singular condition. Nikki, did we add any additional conditions on the final plan?
We did not.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Looking for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Beal.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. Call.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Supalak.
Yes.
Mr. Snare.
Yes.
Miss, Mr. Way.
Yes.
Mr. Fishman.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. Gentlemen, thank you for your time this evening. It has certainly been an adventure for us. And we look forward to seeing, you know, groundbreaking and vertical movings on this, on these particular parcels. We're certainly looking forward to it, and we hope that you are as excited as we are.
And thank you for all your, the commission's nice comments about the the work that we put into this point and for all your comments to date that have made the project so much better. I know it means a lot to Russ and I and Don, but also the design consultants that are on the team that have put in tons of hours, putting together the hundreds of pages you had to look at. And also to Nikki and Jenny and the rest of, and Aaron and the rest of the staff that have reviewed this multiple times. I think there are fifty-six pages of reports that you all had to read from them just on this iteration. So I just want to say thanks to staff commission, all of our consultants for all their time and tireless effort to get us here, too.
Yeah. Couldn't have said it better myself. Just last year was tough and I'm really looking forward to seeing something get built again. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, the next item on our agenda, the application for the amendments at the historic district guidelines was postponed prior to this meeting. And so this item will be rescheduled for the May sixth meeting. On to item seven, specialty hospitals administrative request code amendment. This application is a request for review of amended proposed language based on the direction provided at the March eighteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting for the addition of provisions to the zoning code for specialty hospitals. And Jenny will be presenting this 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 evening, so welcome, welcome.
You. Good evening, everybody. I'll be brief, since it's been a long yet productive evening. Tammy has taken all of your comments from the previous discussion on that March eighteenth meeting and made some modifications to the code that you have before you. So they focused on the maximum building size, making sure that that fit with the previous discussion. And we landed on fifty thousand as the maximum, so looking at that Dublin Springs building as a benchmark, as well as then one of the other previously approved or recently approved rehab facilities. And that seemed really in line with that. We omitted the fence specifications based on the conversation, but also then incorporated language about the emergency perimeter screening plan and the requirement for that. So that sort of helps get get to the reason of what we were talking about and where we landed for that. We also omitted the parking standards and allow, will allow a user to require a parking plan. That way they can define what they need for parking based on their operations. And then we have just some clerical cleanup related to omitting some of those, you know, unless otherwise approved by planning commission, as you'll see it anyway, as part of the conditional use process, and that allows for that. And then the last two things were, there was discussion about exploring that licensing and certification requirement. And ultimately, when talking with that and looking, doing some research, there's just not really a good state requirement. It's just not consistent in terms of what's required for users. So we did not include anything at this time related to that, just because it didn't seem like there was something we could really hang our hat on. Well, and then the last part was, the commission had requested some maps, which we've included in your documentation that show these parcels in terms of their acreage and their proximity to residential. And that it seems, I think we've addressed the commission's concerns to make sure that we're not negatively impacting residential areas with offering. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Jenny. Ms. Fox.
Yeah, Jenny, I just have a question. As I read, and I and I think all of the requirements that we have put in here under nine, especially about locating a minimum of five hundred feet from any residential district or use. But then on the next page, rear yard and side yard, it talks about the required rear yard should not be less than one quarter of the sum of the height of the structure. In no case shall the rear yard be less than fifteen feet. So it seems to like contradict each other. Because if you are allowed a rear yard, that means that you're measuring from the back of a building to the to the lot line. So do they contradict each other or is it, am I just not reading it correctly?
They, I, we would consider those to be two separate things. So what were the five hundred foot minimum distance would be, so you have a parcel that they want to put their building on. You wouldn't, there can be no residential within five hundred feet of that property line. So if you have, so let's say Dublin Springs, they have a parcel boundary. If they want to come in today and build that there, you could not have residential within five hundred feet as measured from that property line.
The property line. Okay.
Yeah. Is really only related to where the building can be located on the site.
Okay.
All of SO. So if you want to change that, that changes the requirements for every property that has.
No, I just wanted to be clear about what the five hundred foot was. I was thinking it was five hundred foot from the back of a building to a residential property line, but it's property line to property.
Property line, that would have been a more specific way for me to say that, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions from the commission? Yes, Mr. Way.
I'm sorry, I'm coming into this late again, so this, you may have already covered all this. Is there any limitation to the number of beds or actually how long people can stay in the facility?
We did not include that as part of that. We had a lot of discussion about timing and should this use be related or be specific to to how long somebody stays there? And we determined, based on our previous discussions, that we did not want to include that as as part of this.
Okay.
Any other questions? This is one of those ones that surface level looked super easy. You know, we had a couple of applications and we said, oh, yeah, we just need to create a new definition. And I got a, you know, pat on the back to staff. You guys have been remarkable, all the minutia that have come up, whether it's length of stay or definition of hospital or any of the, I love the care facility. I think that's phenomenal. You know, we had, you know, how do we even define this? And specialty hospitals, a care facility focused on, you know, we had back and forth discussions. So thank you very much. This was, I I know it was not just one person who contributed to this. And so please pass around our thanks. We, as a commission, one of the things that we've concentrated on the last few years is when we find something that's ambiguous that we are struggling with a little bit, we want to make it easier for the next generation. So we may remember specialty hospital from one application to the next as far as how it doesn't conform to typical hospital, but that doesn't make it easier for new commission members who are coming on to actually understand what that is. We don't want to reinvent the wheel every single time. So as, and I put a challenge to the rest of the commissioners, as you see things that maybe could be interpreted different ways or we don't have clear cut in our code, please continue to bring those out and highlight those items so that we can address them in code for future.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. And Tammy did the vocal work here, so I will pass that along to her. I appreciate that. And again, we appreciate your collaboration and and talking through this because we have better products when we all work together. So thank, thank you to all of you for your commitment to this. So with that, then, we're recommending, you make a recommendation of approval to the city council for this.
Fantastic. And any public comment on this item?
We don't have any public comment. Perfect. With that, I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Thank you, Mr. Supalak. Ms. Beal.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Fishman.
Yes.
Mr. Way.
Yes.
Mr. Snare.
Yes.
Mr. Supalak. Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. Call.
Yes.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. It's been a long but very, very productive evening. At this time, do we have any communications either from staff or from the commission?
I have one. I don't know if Nikki has one or anything to add after. So we are looking at some joint training with all of our boards and commissions, similar to how we used to do in years past. Board and commission chairpersons for a little bit of time and then all the groups together. And we're looking at some May dates, May the seventeenth and eighteenth. I'm going to send an email out to everybody for that, but I just wanted to give you a heads up to see if either one of those dates work for you. It'd be an evening and virtual, unfortunately, but I can't, I definitely can't. If I can't get us in a room together, I can't get everybody in a room together. So but a good opportunity still to chat and we'll keep it focused. Again, I'll shoot an email or have Nikki do that tomorrow. Again, I'll shoot an email or have Nikki do that tomorrow, just to see everybody's availability, but just wanted to give you a heads up about that.
Thank you, Jenny.
Yeah, no, no problem. Nikki, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't have any additional communications.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, another evening on the books. So thank you very much for spending your Thursday night together. It's always a pleasure to work with you. All right. Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.